Good evening. My name is Darrell Pressley, Chief Communications Officer for Prince George's County Public Schools, and I would like to welcome you to the October 28th Board of Education meeting. Tonight's meeting will begin with a special news break highlighting secondary school reform. The legislative agenda will focus on issues affecting the school district that may be up for discussion during the 2011 legislative session, including school funding, educator pensions, tuition tax credits, and charter schools. Discussion items on tonight's agenda include a presentation on secondary school reform that will provide an overview and updates of the initiative, including the reform model, timeline, guiding principles, survey results, and models for high schools. The board will also discuss a new high school grading policy and finance, audit, and budget updates, including race to the top, proposals, and financial trends for the past several years. Items under the consent agenda include proclamations for the observance of American Education Week and Native American History Month in county schools, and a board action to release the performance bond for Maximus Corporation. And now, the October 28th board meeting is about to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Pressley. Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for October 28, 2010. Before we begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they sometimes interfere with the taping of the meeting. At this time, Ms. Waller, would you please introduce us to -- would you please lead us in the board prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, stare us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the report which stands one nation under God, indivisible and infinite.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Dent, call the roll, please.
Ms. Beck, present. Ms. Fletcher, present. Ms. Eilidh, present. Mr. Johnson. Ms. Johnson, present. Ms. Waller, present. Mr. Harris, present. Dr. Watson. Mrs. Jacobs, present.
Thank you. Just want to note for the record that Mr. Johnson and Dr. Watson are here in the building and not present for roll call. Colleagues, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion? Thank you. It's been properly moved in second that we adopt the agenda for the August, October 28, 2010, meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, motion passed. May I please have a motion, colleagues, for approval of the minutes for the October 28, 2010 -- no, today is October 28th. October 14, 2010, board meeting minutes. Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved in second that we approve the board meeting minutes for October 14, 2010. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Thank you. Saying none, motion passed. At this time, we actually have a special presentation, or production, I would say, produced by Mr. Dwayne Brown. Not our usual news break. This is secondary school reform.
My name is William Height, and I'm Superintendent of Schools for the Prince George's County Public School System. In late 2009, we began a process of strategic planning for dramatically changing the way our middle schools and high schools serve the needs of our children. This is our secondary school reform initiative. The world our children face today is vastly different than a generation ago, and is changing more rapidly every day. The realities that face high school dropouts are bleak, and as a school system, we must adapt to these societal and economic changes and become better at preparing our children for 21st century careers. The mission of secondary school reform is to graduate every student college and workforce-ready. So with a high school diploma, our graduates are immediately competitive for jobs in the marketplace and are also prepared to excel in college-level courses. In order to be successful, we absolutely must raise our expectations, not only for students, but also holding our employees, the adults accountable. We must raise the bar for ourselves and meet or exceed those standards within and beyond the classroom. We must also expand opportunities to give parents and students broader choices in schools, in coursework, and in activities. We have to expand the menu of options that we have provided to allow our students to find an area where they can thrive. And finally, we must improve and enhance the support mechanisms to raise student achievement and teacher effectiveness. We cannot afford for anyone to fall through the cracks. The consequences of failure are simply too high. In order to accomplish this mission, we need an all-hands-on-deck approach. We need your support. We need your ideas. We need your feedback, and we need your commitment. Explore our website to learn more about secondary school reform, but more importantly, become involved.
I see that is a little different than a news break, but definitely informative as we move into this very important topic around secondary school reform. We're proud to announce that Tuesday, on Tuesday, October 19, 2010, we opened our first-of-its-kind New Beltsville Family Academy. The New Beltsville Family Academy will offer free parent education and awareness. Its classes that are designed to ensure that parents are engaged in their child's education. This academy will serve parents in the Calverton-Vansville Elementary Schools, as well as Francis Fuchs Elementary -- Early Childhood Center, the Beltsville Academy, Martin Luther King Jr., and Buck Lodge Middle Schools, and High Point High School. The design of the family academies across the county, as we continue to try to work with our communities to help us to open these academies, is to empower parents so that they are aware of what's happening in the school system, and also to help them navigate the system. A school system of our size, sometimes you need a map to get through all of the pieces. So we strongly encourage community engagement in that regard. This week, from October 23rd through the 31st, Prince George's County Public Schools, we are celebrating Red Ribbon Week. It is the oldest and largest drug prevention campaign in the country. This event serves as a vehicle for communities and individuals to take a stand for hopes and dreams of our children through a commitment of drug prevention, and it also provides an educational process and a personal commitment for us to be drug-free. So we encourage you to be involved in that process. The Red Ribbon Campaign was started by the National Federation of Parents for Drug-Free Youth when drug traffickers in Mexico City murdered DEA agent Kiki Camarena in 1985. This began the continuing tradition of displaying red ribbons as a symbol of intolerance towards the use of drugs. We would like to give a heartfelt thank you to Capital One Bank and the Heart of America Foundation for selecting Langley Park McCormick Elementary for Library Redesign Project. The Heart of American Foundation Library Redesign Makeover Program aims to create lively and invigorating reading spaces for children and to saturate school and home environments with new books. Approximately 50 Capital One Bank volunteers worked over a two-day period to transform the library. Capital One Bank and the Heart of America Foundation provided more than 3,700 books, including 1,000 new books for the library. Again, thank you to Capital One and the Heart of America Foundation. The Board of Education, along with Dr. Height, met with County Executive-Elect Mr. Reshun Baker yesterday, October 27. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss education reform in Prince George's County, to hear about his commitment to funding and properly funding education in our county. We had an in-depth discussion around enrollment projections, funding impact, and also, we were very interested in hearing his views around having a seamless agenda as we go to Annapolis for the next legislative session. We want to thank Mr. Baker and his team for taking the time to sit down and talk with us on these very important issues. Prince George's County Public Schools and the Board of Education, in partnership with the Health Department for Prince George's County, will be hosting its sixth annual Holiday Food and Fitness Expo. It's scheduled for Saturday, November 6, at the Wayne K. Curry Sports and Learning Complex, which is at 8,001 Sheriff Road in Landover, Maryland. The expo will provide free health screenings, as well as medical and nutritional consultations. Vendors will be onboard to provide healthy food tasting, which is always a good idea. We also ask -- we will also have Ask the Expert, where you will have an opportunity to interact with healthcare and fitness experts. That's where you can go and get all the free advice that you normally have to pay for from health experts. Flu shots will also be offered at this event, so please come out and participate as we join in this health and fitness campaign, if you will. We have some upcoming events we want to remind you of. November 10, at 6 o'clock, is our DIAB meeting. It's scheduled here in the Board Executive Conference Room. All are welcome to attend. On November 11, we have our System Oversight Meeting. The topic of discussion is human resources. Superintendent Height has submitted a white paper to the board around human capital reform, so it also provides an opportunity for us to talk about that subject going forward. On November 22 is our Capital Improvement Program and Finance Audit and Budget Meeting Discussion that will be here in the boardroom, and it's scheduled to begin at 5:00 p.m. December 6 is the swearing-in ceremony and the election of Chair and Vice Chair for the Board of Education. All persons who are interested in speaking must register with the Board of Education office two and a half hours prior to the meeting time. You may call 301-952-6115. At this time, I would like to have Mr. Charles Zimmerman, the band director and the students at Laurel High School, to come forward. Please.
I'm delighted to take this opportunity to present to you the new marching band uniforms that were purchased for Laurel High School Marching Band. The funding that the Board of Education was able to provide the instrumental music department to make the purchase of these new uniforms possible for Laurel and other high schools in the county has made a great impact on our music programs across the school system. Since the moment the students first wore their new uniforms, I've seen a new vigor in their performance and greater pride in their presentation. The uniforms that they replaced were 13-years-old and have served the school and the students well, but had long outlasted their expected lifetime and were in great need of replacement. However, thinking -- before the funds became available and thinking about replacing those old uniforms, I was uncertain of how we would ever raise the money, the numerous bake sales and other fundraisers that would have to happen to acquire the funds needed. Then the board was able to provide significant funding for the music program to replace our aging uniforms, and for this, I'm deeply appreciative. I have taught in Prince George's County for 13 years, and the support provided to the instrumental music department over the past three to four years has been unprecedented and has greatly improved the lives of thousands of students who have received instruction in music. I commend you for your dedication to the music students of Prince George's County, and I assure you that my students and I will take full advantage of these new uniforms and represent Laurel High School and Prince George's County schools to the best of our abilities and all our musical endeavors. And I'd like to introduce Xavier Sumter and Katie Walker.
My name is Xavier Sumter, and I'm a senior at Laurel High School. Dear members of the Board of Education, first, I would like to thank Mr. Zimmerman for giving me the opportunity to express my appreciation to the Board of Education. As a senior at Laurel High School and as a member of the marching band all four years of my high school career, I feel that receiving new uniforms has set a new standard for a higher esprit de corps in the marching band. In the previous years, the old dingy uniforms were uninspiring and plain, but the new uniforms have energized the band and encouraged us toward a better performance. Due to your generous fundings, the old uniforms are not an issue for us anymore. It is our goal this year and any years to come to make the Board of Education proud of the Laurel High School marching band. On behalf of the entire band, we sincerely thank the Board of Education for funding our new uniforms.
Dear members of the Board of Education, I would like to thank you for granting us the privilege to purchase new band uniforms. When we go out onto the football field, everyone looks and admires how professional we look as a band. Our unified look improves our band's presentation, and we owe that to you. We've had the same uniforms for many years, and now that the Laurel High School Marching Band has new uniforms that will last a long time. Thank you for helping us achieve the new look we really needed.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. They look fabulous!
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you very much.
We are really proud of the students, and they look really, really well. They look good.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I yield Dr. Height to you, I also wanted to make sure that we mention Ms. Fletcher and I, along with Dr. Whitehead, actually were at the Sutland Elementary School reading extravaganza this past week, and it was a fabulous event because Principal Walker really encouraged students to read and gave them the challenge of reading 25 books, I believe, Ms. Fletcher, by May 30, Dr. Height. So we have a challenge to contribute, which Ms. Fletcher and I have agreed to do, to contribute a book for them to read as part of their 25 books to read, and we also have volunteered to go back and read the books to the early elementary school students so that they can then quiz their parents on the topics. So, and one particular book is about gang awareness. We're really excited about the opportunity to do that, so I wanted to thank our principal for taking the opportunity and for really putting together such a fabulous program for our students. Mr. Walker. Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by extending our appreciation to one of our partners in education, who made a generous donation to our schools this month. Yesterday, Congresswoman Donna Edwards joined representatives from Goddard Space Flight Center and Lockheed Martin for a computer donation ceremony at Oxon Hill High School. The school received quite a few computers, monitors, laptops, docking stations, and speakers. This event marks the beginning of a new partnership that will provide refurbished computers and equipment to schools, including laptop computers for Robert Gray, Cherokee Lane, and Glenridge Elementary Schools. So thank you to our partners at Lockheed Martin and the NASA Goddard Space Flight Center. As you may have heard, the Healthy Schools Program has been expanded to all schools this year. To support our continued focus on encouraging students and staff to adopt a healthy lifestyle, I also join a board chair in encouraging you to participate in the annual Holiday Food and Fitness Expo on November 6. Please keep in mind, as you enjoy this free event, that it is made possible through strong partnerships with our county agencies and businesses, including the Prince George's County Health Department, the Maryland National Park, and Planning Commission, Prince George's Community College, the Greater Baton Medical Services, Washington Adventist Hospital, and Priority Partners, just to name a few. The school district also held its first of two -- of three town hall meetings. We held them on October 18 and the 25th to share updates on school system achievements, priorities, and initiatives with school system employees and members of the community. I am pleased to report that we have had excellent participation thus far, with nearly 200 people taking part and sharing their input and ideas. I would like to thank those who have joined us for those meetings and encourage those of you who haven't had the opportunity to attend the final town hall meeting on Monday, November 1, at Oxon Hill High School. The employee town hall meetings have also taken place on the same days, and Monday's meeting will begin at 4:30, and the community town hall meeting will begin at 7:00. We hope to have the same level of participation at the next budget public hearing as well. We would like to have parents and members of the community share their ideas, issues, or concerns about proposed program reductions, or staffing changes, or suggest new budget priorities. I encourage you to attend the January 11 Board of Education FY 2012 Operating Budget Public Hearing at 7:00 p.m. at the Sasser Administration Building, so your priorities can be heard during the development process of our budget. As a reminder, the annual State of the School System Address will be held on November 16 at the Bowie Center for Performing Arts. Employees, families, and members of the community are all encouraged to attend to learn about the latest initiatives in Prince George's County Public Schools, hear success stories from our graduates, and enjoy musical selections from our talented vocal music students in the Bowie High School Choir. Please visit the school system's website for more details. Most importantly, and certainly not least, as today marks the last day for early voting in Maryland, I also want to encourage all our citizens to get out and exercise your constitutional right on Tuesday, November 2, and please vote. Thank you, and Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Height. And in accordance with our revised board policy with regard to public comment, we now accept public comment prior to the agenda item topic. The next legislative -- the next agenda item is the legislative agenda. We do not have a registered speaker, however, we will have Mr. Lynn Lucci, if you will come forward, please, and introduce to the board legislative matters. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Education. Mr. Superintendent, it's a pleasure to be back here again tonight. In just five short days, the 2010 election season will be over, and during those many months, many people running for office had many ideas put forward on education and funding and reform for schools, and in just a couple of short months, we'll see many of those introduced in the 2011 session in the Maryland General Assembly. But I can tell you right now, even before the election results are in, there'll be four major issues that we'll be facing that'll be critical to the school system's operations. The first one, as always, has to do with school funding. As you know, the state is looking to fill about $1.1 billion of revenue shortfall for the 2012 fiscal year operating budget, and the past two years have not been great ones for the school system in Prince George's County in terms of state funding, but it would have been much worse had it not been for the federal stimulus dollars that helped fully fund for the very first time the geographic cost of education index. Well, those stimulus dollars will not be there for fiscal year 2012, and so it's going to be a real challenge for the legislature to backfill other funds to replace the stimulus dollars to make sure that education is fully funded. The governor said that's his priority, and the -- his other governor had a little different position, but it'll definitely be in the front burner for the session. Last year, the legislature made the fix that we've been long looking for on net taxable income, but they did it for the disparity grant program that goes to the County General Fund and not the Bridge to Excellence Program, which goes to the Board of Education. But the fact is that precedent was made, and there's a commitment now to go forward and fix the other problem, which won't happen easily, but needs to be done. The second major issue facing the school system, and the second major challenge, I would call it, has to do with the issue of teachers' pensions. Last year, the state senate passed a plan to phase in responsibility for payment for these teacher pension expenses from the state to the county, phase it in an over period of time. And the amount of money that the county would have to pay, the effect on the county budget and the school system budget would be devastating. The House objected to that, and I should say, overwhelming majority of the Maryland senators from Prince George's County objected to that, and instead, a study commission was formed to look into this. Now, the study commission didn't start meeting until this month of October. It's met twice. It's supposed to present a preliminary report in December, but more than likely, it's not going to have its final report until the 2012 session, but it's still a very important thing to monitor because even though the county would still be obligated to pay teachers' pensions, it could have a result in the county paying other things, and so we have to move forward to block this as we have in the past. The good thing about this commission that's meeting is that only eight members, and two of the eight are from Prince George's County, Mr. Orland Johnson and Ms. Karen Johnson Shaheed, and so we have representation on this task force. Third issue has to do with tax credits for -- vouchers for private schools. This has passed the state senate the past two years, and at a time when the state is struggling to make its commitment to paying for public schools, does not seem like the time it should be diverting any funds to help for tax breaks for private schools. And so that was the position of the House of Delegates the last two years, was not the position of the senate, and so that'll be another issue coming up. And finally, with regard to charter schools, there've been a lot of proposals in this year's campaigns of making charter schools more independent from the local school boards. When the law first passed in 2003 for charter schools, it was clear that these schools would be under the control of the local school board, and all students would be eligible and be held to the same standards as other public schools, including a -- they have to have some of a qualitatively different curriculum, but held to the same standards. There's been a lot of proposals to loosen that up, and we'll have to be vigilant to make sure that that does not happen. So we will know more sooner when the Board of Revenue Estimates comes back for its estimates for the state budget, as more proposals are refined for the 2011 session, but I think you can be a pretty good bet that all four of these issues will be front and center, and we'll be working on to defend what we know is right in Prince George's County.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lucci. Colleagues, are there any questions of Mr. Lucci regarding this legislative overview? Wow.
Great.
Seeing none?
Thank you very much.
You're sort of off the hook for now.
I'll be back.
We sure get better. Thank you. Colleagues, we do have one speaker for Agenda Item 6.1, Secondary School Reform. Mr. Khan, please come forward.
I'd first like to congratulate Dr. Height and every staff member who is working on secondary school reform. You're doing an excellent job, and this is only partway through the process, I know. But I do have a few comments. One thing that has concerned me from the start is the formulation that is sometimes called "college and workforce-ready" and sometimes "college or workforce-ready." To say that students -- and our goal is for students to be college and workforce-ready is a little bit naive. People going on to college simply are not workforce-ready. They are not prepared, for example, for their career as a physician or an attorney or something like that. Similarly, if you look at what I used to call vocational education students, and we call career and tech students, to ask them to be even more prepared than the students going on to college and say that they have to be college-ready, not meeting the state requirements, but meeting college prerequisites, and get their certificate, is to denigrate them. If they can graduate, meeting all of the requirements that the state requires, and also get a certificate, we all should be delighted and congratulate them, not tell them they've failed and we've failed, and that you've failed. So I think it's important to keep the "or" in there and not the "and," and that goes to your secondary school reform model, if you look at that page. These two things you have, advanced placement or international baccalaureate on one side, 75 percent, and/or, whatever that means, 25 percent of students graduating with a certificate, one has nothing to do with the other. If you want to say 100 percent of those who are not going on to college will have a certificate in some career or be prepared for the career, that's a good goal. You want to say 75 percent of those going on to college will take an AP course, and maybe some of the others as well, that's a good goal. I'd be happy if you said as a goal that they can all read at the 12th grade level. Now, that's a goal for graduation that's far more than Maryland requires, and we ought to be holding ourselves to a standard like that. Some other quick comments. ILP, I don't think you're using it nearly strongly enough. You use it for career planning, make sure that people have the courses necessary to get into the right college that they want to get. That's all good, but you can also use it for non-special ed kids to get them an individualized learning program that also fills in their gaps so that they're prepared to move on to those courses that they need. There's a statement in here to increase school options by expanding charter and contract schools. If that's not just paying lip service to race to the top, this is a major sea change in the attitude of the administration towards charter schools, and I congratulate you on it. I got a lot of problems with -- I got a lot of problems with the school cluster stuff, which I will send to you in emails, and Mr. Baker is not yet the county executive-elect. Please vote on Tuesday, including voting for a new school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. That brings us to Dr. Height. An introduction of our first item, please.
The first item is the discussion item of secondary school reform. And as indicated in the video earlier, it is our goal to ensure that we create a strategic plan around reforming our secondary school experience for our students. This plan is designed to dramatically change the way our middle schools and high schools serve the needs of all students. And this is called our Secondary School Reform Initiative. And so this is vastly different in that one of the things that we want to ensure is that the high school diploma actually means something in the workforce or for students moving to institutions of higher ed. And so part of this strategic plan is really to look at how do we raise expectations? How do we expand opportunities for all students? And how do we enhance mechanisms for support to ensure that we're raising student achievement and also increasing student and school-based effectiveness? And so one of the things that we know is that we can't do this alone, and as we begin this process, we have had many, multiple meetings with many staff members, we've had multiple meetings with the community, and we've had multiple meetings with students about what these things should look like. So here to walk us through a presentation, and then we'll be open for your comments and questions after that, is Ms. Latifah Durant. She has been the project manager on secondary school reform, and she's pulled together a lot of different departments and organizations, really to present this plan today. And this has been a comprehensive piece of work, and this is really designed to change the culture of the high school experience as relates to our students. And so one final note to the gentleman who was speaking to in public comment, this is not about creating a structure of either-or. It is a, this is creating a structure where this notion of the foundation or the floor is raised for all students. So irrespective of whether a student is going off to college or going into the world of work, we feel that the foundational skills for all of those students should be the same, should not be a different set of math skills or reading skills for one or the other. As a matter of fact, a student who receives a certification in one of the career and technical areas is already demonstrated that they can do a math that is much more advanced than the math for students who are meeting the requirements for graduation. So part of this is really to raise the standards for all students. So with that, I'm gonna yield to Ms. Latifah Durant to walk us through this presentation. Ms. Durant?
Thank you, Dr. Height. Thank you, members of the Board. As Dr. Height mentioned, my name is Latifah Durant, and I'm the Program Manager for Secondary School Reform. Now, when I was a little girl, whenever I was reading a book and I didn't know what a word meant, I would go to my mom and say, "You know, Mom, can you tell me what this means?" And sometimes she would tell me, but most often than not, she would tell me to look it up. So I would go to the bookshelf and get that big, thick, red Webster's Dictionary, and I would learn what I needed to learn. And nowadays, with just a few clicks of a button, I can actually get to Webster's online. And the way that Webster's defines reform is to go from one state to another state. That's to go from one state to another state. Now, we've heard the President and even our own Superintendent give a State of the Union Address or State of the School System, and most often, they're telling us about our current state or our present state of affairs. And no one knows better than all of you the current state of our school system. Every year, we graduate about 8,000 students, only a quarter of which, about 2,000 or so, actually meet the minimum requirements to matriculate at the University of Maryland. We know that about 19 or 20 of our middle schools are in some stage of improvement. Our secondary school reform work is designed to move the district from our current state to our vision for the future. And the Superintendent has laid out for us what that vision is. We want to make sure that 100% of our students graduate both career and college-ready. And what does that mean in terms of metrics? We want 75% of our students to graduate with an Advanced Placement AP or an International Baccalaureate IB course in their course history. Well, why? Because we know that the best predictor of college success is college success. And when a student takes an Advanced Placement course and is able to pass that course, we know that they're ready to go on to college. But from a student's perspective, that metric means that as a student, I can apply and be admitted to a college without the need for remediation. Additionally, we want 25% of our students to graduate with a certificate or license. From a student's perspective, that means that they completed a program of study such as carpentry, they got a real-world experience like working on the student-built house, they sat for an exam and passed it, and now they have the skills they need to go out to earn a livable wage. So that's what the vision is for secondary school reform. The next question is, well, how do we get there? The school reform, secondary school reform model has three levers of change. The first is raising expectations, and we talk about raising expectations quite a bit, but we have to go beyond the talk to actually putting the processes, the procedures, the structures in place to make it clear that it's our expectation that all students will graduate college and workforce-ready. The second lever is expanding opportunities, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that more in depth today. But we want to make sure, and we understand it's not a one-size-fits-all. So there are students that may have an interest in one particular field of study, and another student may have an interest in a separate field. And so we want to make sure they're providing all students with opportunities to take courses of study that are of interest to them. And third, we need to enhance our students' experience, and that means providing each student with the type of support that he or she needs to be successful. We began the work of secondary school reform last December with the submission of a strategic plan to the Superintendent and the Executive Cabinet. And over the last 10 months, we've accomplished quite a bit. And I want to just highlight just a few things. We conducted four Phase III meetings throughout the county for students, parents, and community members. We conducted an online survey with about 2,700 survey respondents. We've held eight monthly parent advisory team meetings with our PTA and PTSA members. And we've also developed a preliminary secondary school reform website and some marketing materials that the Board you should've received in your packets today. In addition, we've developed our PGCPs profile of a 21st-century graduate. Now, this document not only details the core areas or core content areas that we want our students to master, but it also identifies those 21st-century skills that we want them to have as well. That's being an effective communicator and collaborator, just being a responsible person. We want them to be engaged both globally and domestically, like in upcoming elections that we have next week. We want them to be successful problem solvers, and all that's outlined in our 21st-century graduate profile. We've also developed a systemic curriculum for our high school advisories. In fact, our college-going culture team has met with several counselors, and they selected the college ed curriculum, and then they also developed some supplemental materials for our advisory period in high schools. Now, this curriculum is important because it helps students and their parents to discover the value of a college education, gain an awareness that their, the choices that they make in high school actually do matter, and also helps them to explore potential careers. In addition, this summer, we provided tuition-based summer school for our 7th and 8th graders, and we implemented a systemic transition day for all of our students that were going to middle school or to high school for the first time. So actually, on August 19th, students were able to get on the bus and visit their new middle or high school, and while they were there for the day, they got the skills and lessons that they needed to be able to successfully transition to that next level, such as, you know, how to navigate the high school schedule, how to open their locker, how to work in teams, and things of that sort. Also this year, the Superintendent expanded our school choice options with the opening of Possibility Prep. Now, what I just mentioned to you is some of the accomplishments of the very hard work of several interdisciplinary and cross-departmental teams. In fact, there are about 17 teams that come under the purview of secondary school reform, and I won't read the descriptions of each of them, but I'll just mention a few. One is the Middle School Task Force that's headed by Dr. Moreno, and they're working to promote middle school academic growth by researching best practices, evaluating existing programs, and building staff capacity. We also have the Curriculum Development Team that's headed by Dr. Libby, and that team is actually working to develop the curriculum for our new high school academies that we'll talk more about in just a moment. We also have the ILP redesign team, and that team is led by our Principal at Carrollton Elementary, John Onkary. That team is working on revising the existing ILP to focus on career exploration and meeting graduation requirements. They're also working to put this new tool in an online platform so that as a student goes from one school to another or from one grade level to another, that that plan is able to follow them. We also have Gear Up, and that focuses on a cohort of students that will graduate in 2014, and that's to make sure that they are prepared for post-secondary education and life after high school. We have the Smaller Learning Communities Team that's working in five of our high schools to create a more personalized environment. Now, while all the teams are doing a phenomenal job and doing phenomenal work, the team that I want us to focus on most for today is the high school redesign. Now, through the redesign, we are developing and implementing high school academies through a cluster model. But before we get into that, I just want to give you some of the background, the guiding principles, so to speak, that help to inform our work. The three principles were student and community interest, career preparation, and ensuring access. And I want to tell you just a little bit more about each one. So in terms of community and student interests, we held community forums, we had an online survey, and we've also held monthly parent advisory team meetings. Of the 2,700 survey participants, most of our respondents were actually students, and so we had about 83% of those respondents were students. What you see here is that while we had 2,700 survey responses and 22 high schools were represented, there were certain schools that had large percentages of respondents. But what's important to note is that the respondents that we see here were spread geographically throughout the county. We asked students about their interest in existing specialty programs, and also their interest in existing CTE programs. And what you see here, this chart just includes the top 10 out of the 27 programs that were So what are our takeaways? It was a student-driven response. There were significant response rates from all across the county, so it didn't matter whether you lived in the north, the central, or the south. Students had the interest, had interest in the same areas. And those interest areas were BPA, science and technology, languages, biosciences, and the CTE interest areas were graphic design, culinary arts, cosmetology, and nursing. So the next principle that we focused on was career preparation. And we realized that it's not enough just to provide our students with career preparation. We had to make sure and ensure that those careers are actually viable in the 21st century. And so to do that, we conducted some labor market research. And we used two, primarily two sources, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics and also the MSDE-PGCPs Joint Task Force on Career and Technical Education. And the essential question that we asked ourselves here was, what industries and occupations are experiencing the most growth? The areas that were identified by both the CTE Task Force and the Bureau of Labor Statistics were health and medical sciences, computer and information technology, and education. Those that were identified by the CTE Task Force were government services, architecture and design, and hospitality and tourism, which makes sense given the fact that we're in the Washington metropolitan area. Also, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics identified business management and finance as a growing area. So our last guiding principle was access. So in order to address access, we developed the school cluster model. And the proposal is that over the next five to seven years, we would actually implement high school clusters whereby students can attend any academy at any school within their cluster. And what you see here is a list of the five proposed clusters. When we developed the clusters, we looked at several factors: geographic proximity, reducing the duplication of programs, strengthening existing programs, and also balancing special education services. Now, when we talked about secondary school reform, it was initially in the context of the Phase III meetings. And so I do want to address a few things around boundaries. First of all, there's no immediate suggested change in the high school boundaries as a result of secondary school reform, nor is there a suggested change in the elementary or middle school boundaries or feeder patterns. There's also a perception that a large number of our students attend schools that are outside of their school boundaries, where in fact, on average, about 84% of our students actually attend their boundary school, and on average, 90% of students attend a school that's within the clusters that we've defined here. Nonetheless, with the implementation of the cluster model and also the implementation of some great academic programs, we expect to see some shifts in student populations, but it's only after we're able to measure those shifts will we then be able to go back and look at whether or not any changes would be needed in terms of boundaries. And just to give you a little bit more of an idea of what you're looking at here on these charts, let's take Frederick Douglass High School for instance. So of the students that attend or live within the Frederick Douglass High School boundary, 87% of students actually attend Frederick Douglass High. And 89% of students that live within the Frederick Douglass attendance boundary attend a school that's within the Frederick Douglass cluster. So now that we gathered the information on community interest, student interest, we evaluated labor market trends that would help our students prepare for 21st-century careers, we developed a model for ensuring and increasing student access to quality programs. All that information together helped to inform the new high school academy model. So what you see, let's see here, are the academies that are designed to prepare our students for 21st-century careers. Each academy actually is comprised of several programs of study. For instance, if you look at Law and Public Service, under Law and Public Service Academy, there are actually several programs such as Homeland Security, Pre-Law, Social Justice. And I also want to note here that these new academies do not impact our existing tested-in programs. So the existing tested-in program at BPA, at Sootland VPA, will continue to operate, as well as our tested-in programs for science and technology at Flowers, Oxon Hill, and So now, how do we get into the implementation? Well, how are we gonna prioritize the academies? What's gonna be the timing of the academies? When should they be implemented? And also the location in terms of where should they be implemented? To determine, one, the first piece, which is the priority, we categorize the various academies, and so we categorize them based on factors such as cost, resources, and planning time. So Category A requires little investment. We're able to build upon existing resources and programs. Category B, some moderate investment. And Category C would be more of a significant investment, such as a brand-new program to the county. For instance, as you see, Category A, we have Global Studies, and Category B, Information Technology, Category C, Transportation Technologies. So now that we've figured out what academies and when to implement them, we need to also determine where to implement them. We haven't quite gotten to the question of where we're going to implement the high school academies. We actually began meeting with high school principals next month. And what you can see here in the sample schedule is that we plan to implement those academies that require the least amount of investment, or those Category A programs first, and those that require significant programs or significant investment in the later years. And this will give us an opportunity to secure the needed resources to be able to accommodate those programs. On this slide, just some estimated cost of funding for the programs. With regards to operating costs, each academy will have a CNI-based academy coordinator. For example, once Global Studies is actually implemented in all of the five clusters, we would need someone in curriculum and instruction to ensure the quality of the program, the fidelity of the program, and address any ongoing issues and needs of the program. In addition, because certain academies will require staff with specialized expertise, we anticipate that we'll need to hire an additional FTE at each school for each academy. The capital improvements shown here are part of the existing CIP budget proposal, and as previously discussed, we're implementing the programs that require the least amount of capital investment first, so that's why as you look out in the out-years, you'll see So that's why as you look out in the out years, you'll see a, an increase in investment in terms of capital improvements. Because as we in, introduce those academies that require more significant investment, we'll need to make certain plant and facility modifications. So, what are our next steps for secondary school reform? Um, first, we need to, again, determine the locations of the high school academies. We need to plan and implement staffing, uh, for our next school year, for those academies that we do plan to bring online, such as facilities, curriculum, and staffing. Also this year, we want to spend some focused attention on developing and implementing a strategic plan for our middle schools. So now, here comes the part that you can play as the board. Um, during our meetings with teachers this past spring on secondary school reform, I had a high school teacher come up to me and say, you know, I went to high school at this school, and now I'm teaching at this school, and nothing's changed in fifty years. She said, you know, we have a few more computers, a couple of smart boards, but really, nothing's changed in fifty years. Everything else that we do has changed over the last fifty years in this country. How we eat, how we communicate, how we live, how, what we drive, everything has changed in the past fifty years. And in order to bring about the kind of change that we need in this, this school system, we have to engage in secondary school reform. We have to take our students from our current state to our vision for the future. And through secondary school reform, we've determined and helped determine how we plan to get us there. And so the school board can help us with this vision, and we need your support in terms of championing the P G C P S profile of a twenty-first century graduate. As I mentioned earlier, the profile not only addresses those core content areas that students need to have, but also those twenty-first century skills that students need to have. We need your support with regards to approving policies and supporting those administrative procedures related to secondary school reform. For example, we need to change our graduation requirement, such that a student can graduate and actually meet the minimum requirements to matriculate at the University of Maryland. That would mean that we need a fourth year of mathematics. That means that we would need to add two years of a foreign language. We need your support in, um, the revised core curriculum and new academy curriculum for secondary school reform. And we need your support, uh, with regards to both the capital and operating expenditures for secondary school reform. I want to thank all of you for your time and allowing me to come and share with you where we are in secondary school reform. I look forward to our continued dialogue and as we all work together to ensure that we graduate all of our P G C P S students college and workforce-ready. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Durant. And, um, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add just a couple of, um, pieces to this. So you saw middle college described as one of the, um, program choices inside of the health, um, career pathway, but it wasn't described as an academy because it's actually housed on the campus of the community college. So it's considered outside of it. However, if in a four-year period of time, four hundred students are pulled from the other boundaries to attend middle college, then that impacts the state rate of capacity at all of those schools. So that gives an idea of why we have to watch where students are moving to first and then make adjustments with respect to available seats, because we're anticipating that the availability of seats will change.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Thank you, Ms. Durant. I, it's, it's interesting because today, um, that one of the county administrators was talking to me about this conversation around middle college last ni- was happening last night at the community foundation, um, um, I guess it was a dinner that we didn't attend. Uh, you probably went to, okay. But anyway, uh, so they were actually talking about this topic, and she said to me, wow, this is really fabulous. I, you know, my girls are out of school, but that would have been perfect for them. So I think as we engage the community and the fact that it was actually being talked about, there was a good thing, um, as we talk about these, you know, different opportunities for our students. Um, I have, um, so colleagues, we're gonna, um, govern ourselves in accordance with board policy so that we will do round one and two, five and three. I have a list so far, Ms. Iliff, Ms. Fletcher, and Ms. Johnson. Ms. Iliff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Durant. Um, I know that a humongous amount of work, uh, went into this, and, um, it really does provide an, a, a great framework and an advance for our thinking around, around reform. It's terrific. Just have a few questions. Just to clarify, um, what you're talking about when you mention a cluster, does that mean that all students who live within the boundary of that cluster would be able to go to any school in that cluster?
When the, uh, plan is completely implemented, yes, a student that lives within the boundary of that cluster would be able to attend any program within their cluster.
Okay. Um, I would like to suggest, since we do have several years lead time of implementing this, that this accompany transportation reform, um, because I think that we're just spending so much money on the buses. Um, school choice just comes along with this other expense, and high school students are the best target group for looking into using public transportation. Um, so it would be great to see a multi-year plan around transportation reform to accompany it.
Ms. Aliff, can I also add that that's for the academy structure? So the test-in programs still operate inside of the boundaries that are already formed for those test-in programs, V P A at Sootland, the, um, science and tech at Flowers, Oxon Hill, and Roosevelt.
Good. Yes, thank you for mentioning this, because when the map was first put out about the clusters, we got lots of calls and emails from people worried that they weren't going to be able to test in anymore to those programs. So it's good to just clarify to everybody, no change to those boundaries. Um, so the one thing that I wanted to suggest around the finance is I would love to see that expanded to be business and entrepreneurship. Um, and I think that, you know, our, our students can really, they could actually make some real money, [laugh] on starting some businesses, um, in that. And I was also surprised not to see education.
Actually, both are within the, the plan, so, um, and I can provide this to the board as well. Each of the academies has programs of study within them. So for example, the entrepreneurship program is within the academy of finance, and the education program is within the program of law and public service.
Oh, okay, thank you. You might have said that, sorry, I missed it. Great.
I think I just gave one example, but just to clarify.
Okay, good, thanks. I would also like to, um, follow up on this whole question of college readiness and career readiness. And, um, I, I totally understand where the speaker was coming from on this, but I think it's a crucial point that, around this board's reform, that we really do believe that is one and the same. Um, that the demands of today's workplace are equally as rigorous as the demands of college. And, um, all students need to have an equal, um, skill set when they're graduating. I would also point out that ninety-plus percent of students and parents, um, when they enter the school system, will respond that they want their children to go to college. And so we need to build in that readiness. Um, I do agree, though, that the individual learning program, um, can definitely be, uh, added. And I think that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iliff. Ms. Fletcher?
Uh, individual learning plan. I hear you, um, talking about a high school and middle school. And I know we've had conversations where we talked about, um, Dr. Height and Dr. Abogaz, uh, going backwards, you know, starting from high school and working backwards. I need to see where our elementary schools are playing into this cluster, um, to prepare kids at the elementary school, uh, level. The other question I have is, and, and it goes back to the elementary school, because you were talking about tuition-based summer school for the seventh and eighth graders. Um, where are we in terms of, I call it social promotion in elementary school? A child is not doing math or not doing reading on, on grade level, and we move them forward. Yes, we're, we're giving them, um, the resources as, uh, as they move forward to, to assist them, but the frustration of that student in a class with peers who are even further, I, I'm trying to understand how that works. Um, the individual learning plan, I, I think you need to, to explain exactly what that is, because Ms. Johnson and I sat on, um, in some planning meetings, and it's actually, uh, would end up as a portfolio. Ms. Johnson used the term, a child in the kindergarten, uh, says, I like to play in the water. And as they, as that plan is developed and, uh, critiqued and fine-tuned, it gives you a window into the, the classes that could be offered in this cluster, because this child may end up wanting to, to do, uh, what is it, oceanogra- um, oceanography? And so those courses need to be available to that student. My other question is, and I really would like for you to answer this one, uh, now, is certification, licensing that is required, courses that they're taking in C T E, and even college-ready, are we making it, um, a requirement that you, you must, in order for you to graduate, if you're in that college course, um, um, venue, that you must make X number on the S A Ts? The same way it is that when you're in the career path, um, one time in the civil service exam, you, you have to pass a civil service exam if you're taking a business course. Um, if you're taking cosmetology, um, barbering, plumbing, carpentry, you must pass the state license test in order for you to get it, because I know we're graduating students who are in some of those classes and do not pass the test. So is that going to be a requirement in order to receive, um, your, your high school diploma?
Yeah, Ms. Fletcher, we're going to come back with a set of policies and administrative procedures related to this that really speak to that. And to your first question about S A T, no, the answer is not a minimum score on S A T. However, one of the things that we want to make sure is that if a student is sitting in an advanced placement or in a national baccalaureate, that they are expected to sit for that assessment. If a child is sitting in, if a student is sitting in cosmetology, or in carpentry, or in, uh, Cisco certification, they are also expected to sit for that certification. We als- we have a lot of students, and the, the area issue is not so much students who are not passing the assessment, we have thousands of students sitting in career and technical education classes right now who are not even sitting for the assessments. And we actually want that to be a part of the requirement, um, as a, um, product of a new graduation strategy.
But you have students, and that's the career part. Um, you have, you, you talked about the I B program. I'm talking about the average student who says, no, I'm not taking a career tech course, career education course, but I do want to go to college. So there are some requirements that I must take. And my question is, what, upon graduation, are we going to require that student to do? Or is our curriculum going to be based on the S A T and the, uh, A C T?
We are, yes, we are working with, um, as a matter of fact, you will see in some of the information we're going to talk about with Race to the Top, we're actually working with college board. And this goes back to your earlier question as well. So that we're also doing an audit of our curriculum, of our professional development, and of our instructional strategies, not just at the high school, but at the middle school, and at the elementary school to begin building that whole component of college readiness. So what would be different for a young person who would graduate, even if they want to go off to college, they're not interested in one of the career pathways, is that now there's a requirement for more math, more science, and language.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Thank you, Dr. Height. Ms. Johnson?
Um, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I've put all my questions together, so if I could just exhaust round one, round two, I think it makes it easier. Thank you. Um, first of all, Ms. Durant, thank you so much. I would like to begin by saying that my vision of reform for Prince George's Public Schools is that a student should be able to move seamlessly through pre-K, from pre-K through twelve, and exit our system in a high state of readiness. Would you agree?
Absolutely.
Okay. Having provided that, um, floor, I would like to know, why is there such a disparity on slide seventeen about the numbers of respondents, the percentage of respondents? I would think to have it, to really capture the county, you would have had as, the, the same number, essentially. Could you explain that difference?
So this was a self-selected, uh, participation in the survey. We administered the survey at the phase three meetings in paper format. We also, um, sent the information to all of our high schools and asked them to have their students participate. Uh, we've also had parent advisory team meetings, and we disseminated the survey there as well. And so it was a self-selection whether or not people wanted to participate in the survey. And with the breakdown that you see here, it just happens to be that those are the numbers of folks that responded, what I'm showing is the greatest number of responses from these particular communities. Either they have a student in that school, they currently attend that school themselves, or they're a community member within that school's boundaries.
Okay, I, I hear you. I, I would suggest that it would have been far more effective being able to see balance across the county. The, the data, the results you got, it doesn't mean that I think that it isn't accurate, but I do believe that it is imperative that when we do this kind of thing, that we clearly show, um, that we have an equal spread across the county for respondents. I think that is most important. Next commentary, um, with regard to, um, the changing, the reform of high school, is the intent that the students, as they go through, that there will be a level of project outcome-based high-interest learning based on the individual student?
Yes, there is. And I don't know if, um, Ms. Goldson wants to speak to the work that we're doing right now and around senior projects.
So we have a committee that's made up of administrators, students, and teachers who are looking at, and curriculum and instruction representatives that are looking at a senior project, which is a culminating activity that students will prepare an issue that is related to their career interests in the academy that they would have matriculated to through from middle to high school as part of their exit strategy.
And senior, you're talking twelfth grader.
Correct.
What I'm asking is at every grade level of the high school, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, that there be an outcome that students can see that they have been developing through the whole year, not just twelfth grade.
Like project-based learning that's related to their career academy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the other rec- the recommendation that I have, that world languages can be its own academy, I think that's exciting. However, in the twenty-first century, we cannot afford to just have world languages as a separate entity, but it must be clearly embedded and threaded through the curriculum. And I think to begin that level of readiness, I would really love to see language learning acquisition beginning at fourth grade. Getting the teachers is a whole nother story we got to work on, but I would submit to you, um, that our young people, to be competitive with children that live in Europe, live in other countries, who speak two and three other languages coming right out of the high school level, we are behind, and I think we need to start embedding that immediately. And if we're going to do world languages. My other recommendation is that, um, for the law, et cetera, I am asking that you add a, uh, public policy and international studies to the academy clusters. I think the diversity of our student population demands this international studies as a focus for that group of students that would have an interest in it, and it doesn't mean that it has to be separate from law. But I really, really want to see that. Um, prior, category A priority of academies, global studies, again, same thing, world languages needs to be threaded completely, um, through that, and not just the Spanish or the French, but rather those languages that the State Department has identified as critical, um, to, uh, America and its, uh, diplomatic service, et cetera. Um, but overall, I will say that- Um, but overall, I will say that while we clearly have got to nail down some other things, this is wonderful. I am so excited, um, about the high school reform and looking at this from the individual student perspective, creating energy and excitement for our students to learn. That is what they've been demanding, a- and it is just about time. It is woefully late, and so as a member of this board, um, at this time, you have my full support, um, for making sure that kids are just gonna be excited about going to high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We too are excited. The staff is excited, the students are excited. Uh, and if you would like, I can address some of your comments now. Um, with regards to world languages, you're absolutely right. So one of the things I mentioned is that we wanna look at making sure that all of our students graduate with two years of the same world language, um, have completed it as a part of their graduation requirements. That's a minimum that's required at the University of Maryland. So for those who have a particular interest in languages, the world, the Global Studies Academy would provide them with that opportunity to do a more in-depth, uh, language study. Um, to your point about the International Studies Program, you're absolutely right. And that is also within one of the academies, I believe it's under Global Studies, uh, International, uh, Studies Program, as well as public policy is under the Law and Public Service Academy. And so students, um, hopefully will also have the opportunity, if they have an interest in law and public service and global studies, that there might be some opportunities for them to, to, um, take courses u- in, under both academies. But I, I agree with you one hundred percent.
And Ms. Johnson, I wanted to respond, yeah, the comment about assessments. Uh, I don't think we're gonna, you're gonna see end-of-year assessments, like a tenth grade assessment, eleventh grade. I think what, where we're moving is really end-of-course and more project-based. We've actually started with our integrated science in ninth grade, instituting more project-based. And I think you're gonna see that with Common Core. So what we've, what our curriculum instruction people are looking at is creating projects, end-of-course projects, as well as end-of-course tests. So it, it goes to that question, but I don't think you'll see like a tenth grade, because tenth graders will be taking different kinds of subjects. But we are moving definitely in that direction around project-based learning.
And thank you for that, Dr. Harrow.
Regarding the building, it, it doesn't mean that it has to be the concluding one. It could be one that grows through each and each level. There would be a presentation as they are moving towards their final. However, that, that works would, would, would I see be very valuable.
And we, uh, we have a very exciting project going on with the National Commission for Teachers for America's Future and NASA Goddard Building STEM Modules in our Earth and Space Science. So, uh, I'm real excited about where we're moving with that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, I have Ms. Beck, Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Um, when I first saw the, um, initiative posted on Board Docs, I went back to the January, uh, version to kinda compare, uh, what I had seen in the public, what we had originally pitched, and to try and compare, um, how we had listened to the public and, and revised the proposal. Let me say, the original proposal had a map, so that was a lot easier to see the clusters. But, um, what I did was, I looked at the new clustering, because there has been some changing. Parkdale switched with Laurel, and Suitland moved to Cluster Three. Okay, so my concern is we've left Cluster Five as almost a minicluster. It, the enrollment is so light in Cluster Five at Potomac, Forestville, Crossland, and Oxon Hill. The enrollment in that area is only at seventy-six percent capacity. So if you look at Cluster One, it's at ninety-eight percent. It's full of nine, over ninety-five hundred children are currently in those schools. And yet, there's only fifty-three hundred in this Cluster Five, which I'll describe as a minicluster. My concern is the viability of diverse programs when you're in a very small, um, group setting. So I know you would have to have a certain number of students in order to make a program successful. Well, that's my concept here, and I need you to tell me that that's wrong. Um, I'd like to know actually why Suitland was taken out of Cluster Five, because originally I was told that, um, the first Cluster Five was part of the small, smaller learning communities. And that's why Friendly wasn't in there, and that's why it had to be configured like it was.
Yeah, absolutely right. So the original Cluster Five was made up of the smaller learning community schools, and it was originally our, um, belief that they had to remain clustered under the guidelines of the grant. However, upon further investigation, we learned that, um, while that those schools were all a part of the smaller learning communities grant, we did not have to cluster them as such. And so we decided, um, based on some community feedback and also feedback from the strategy team, to move Suitland from Cluster Five to Cluster Three. Part of that, as I mentioned earlier, is we needed to balance programs across cus- clusters. So Suitland and Crossland actually have a lot of the same programs. And so in order to make things equitable amongst the clusters, Suitland was moved from Cluster Five to Cluster Three. Um, likewise, we got some feedback from community members about, um, Parkdale and Duval, the fact that they are on the same street, albeit Long Street, um, and, but they were not in the same cluster. And so to accommodate that, we then moved Parkdale, um, and Duval, I'm sorry, we moved Duval and Parkdale into the same cluster and moved Laurel to Cluster Two. So that's the explanation why those changes were made.
Okay, and the viability of, um, diverse programs in a smaller grouping of, um, students?
So there are a couple of things there. Um, one, it's actually a great opportunity in Cluster Five that they have a number of seats available, because as we began to implement these programs, we expect to see, um, students that want to attend those schools. So although I mentioned that we have about eighty-four to ninety percent of students that attend their schools either within their boundary school, within their cluster, you might start to see more of a return to that cluster as there's programs implemented there, and there'll be space available for those students. Um, the team is also looking at, uh, determining what the number of students is, uh, required to make a program viable. So you're absolutely right, we need to also keep that into consideration.
Right, because I would hate to get further along and put a, um, a couple of programs in there and not be able to sustain it because the kids are not coming.
Yes.
Um, I think we've seen that before, um, and, and somewhat in AP. We had to really support AP until the kids started to come. And, yeah, and Forestville. The, um, the other piece is on, on your slides twenty-eight through thirty of the, the new presentation, can you add the actual enrollment on your, um, in attending boundary school and not attending boundary school? You have the percentages there, but you don't have the enrollment. And I think that that helps us see the number of, the actual number of students rather than just looking at the percentage. My final question would be alternate certification. We, we build it, but now how do we staff it? How do we get the teachers that we're going to need in this number? Where do we get them? I mean, we build them on our own, grow them?
And then, the next step is to meet with the high school principals. And we actually want to assess interest and capacity internally in the staff. And that actually will help us guide, um, some of the academies. Now, Mr. Duran talked about certain academies, but different programs that fall under those academies. For example, education fell under the public policy. So we want individual schools to look at their internal folk first, to say, where is the energy? Ms. Beck, I don't think this is gonna work if we can't find advocates inside the schools to make them run.
Right.
And you noticed that we added that FTE. Do you saw that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because my experience has been, if you don't have that burning passion internal to the building, the program's gonna die.
Right.
And so we, and the principal has to be on board, and the internal staff has to be on board. And I think that's where we'll build that capacity. I actually think this is gonna be a very exciting opportunity for people to expand certification. Um, now, you know, we struggle with certification in some of our, in the, um,
CTE.
They're CTE, right, right. And, and I think when we look at aeronautics, I mean, as, imagine an aeronautics program at a school, making sure that we have those people that not only have the calculus and the physics, but bringing in NASA Goddard scientists to assist with that. So we actually see real partnerships. Very excited about Potomac. Uh, Lockheed Martin has a real nice relationship with Potomac, very willing to bring in their folk to help. So now we have to pair those two. So I, I just think there's some tremendous opportunity for us.
And sort of, and I'm hopeful that that's gonna work. But I think that we do need a Plan B for, um, when we don't have the capacity already on board. Where will we find these? Are we, I know you're working with the universities. Maybe they can work with us on this plan to ensure that when we do start programs, we have the capacity to, uh, continue teaching them.
An alternative route to certification for some of the non-traditional areas, Ms. Hathaway Beck, has become an emphasis for the State Board as well.
Right.
So the State Board has, um, acknowledged that we have a structure that sometimes makes it difficult for school districts to attract individuals who are working in those fields. Remember when we, um, some years ago, we signed the MOU with Buildings and Trade, and so part of that was a teacher of record and an expert from the field, like our student-built house,
Right.
where those individuals are bringing their expertise, and they're helping students apply those skills to the curriculum. And so that's another part of how we look at this. But as we've found with the Oxon Hill Science and Tech Program, it's because of the champion who is the individual serving as the coordinator that now they have some real energy inside of that program, and they're beginning to attract scientists from Nas- from, uh, NASA Goddard, engineers from Lockheed, and those individuals are actually in the classrooms with the teachers, helping to teach the students. And that's what we're looking at inside of this type of model. We also have some organizations inside of our own system. So we have individuals who work on transportation. We have individuals who repair, um, uh, who repair HVAC systems. And how do we actually use some of our internal, uh, capacity to also assist with this so that these could become also learning opportunities for students inside of some of these academies?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Mr. Harris?
Uh, first, let me see, um, it looks pretty exciting, to be honest. I, I think, I'm starting to think about staying back a couple of years now. Um, but, um, I think Ms. Johnson, uh, was right on the ball on two, on two things. Um, the first thing was the survey. Uh, only twenty-seven hundred, uh, kids out of, you know, uh, what, a hundred and twenty kids, uh, well, twenty-seven hundred people out of, out of one million people in our county and, and a hundred and twenty-eight hundred kids in our county, uh, did the survey. So I'm, I'm kinda questioning, uh, question, uh, question, uh, questioning the accuracy of, uh, the survey. And I would like to see that it goes from being a, um, self, um, self-examining or self-taking survey to an actual survey where you're calling people or, uh, you're going into individual schools and getting people to actually, uh, take the surveys. Um, and another thing was the senior projects. I would like to see the senior project start a little bit early, um, and be more of like a, maybe a career project or, or a college readiness project, just because I'm ta- I'm doing, why is there a senior project? And, um, what I've noticed now is I have to do the senior project plus fill out my college applications and all my ac- after-school activities, and it's kinda over, overweight. So if the senior project or the project starts a little bit early, tenth or eleventh grade, where the student is starting to think about what they wanna do, I think will be beneficial. Another thing, um, is the school, about the clusters, what about alternative schools? Uh, in particular, um, in particular, Annapolis Road and, um, in Green Valley, uh, do they have programs already? Or are we think, are we gonna be moving towards, since they are high schools, are we gonna be trying to put programs into those schools? I know that, you know, Tall Oaks and, well, Tall Oaks has those programs. What we're gonna do for the other alternative programs? And the last one, page thirty-six and thirty-seven. And on page thirty, thirty-six and thirty-seven, it shows the, the schedule. And it, and it shows clusters, it's like, uh, it says, um, Law and Public, Public Service and two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, Cluster Three and Cluster Four. Uh, Cluster Three and Cluster One are gonna get these programs. Is every school in Cluster Three and Cluster One gonna get the program, programs? And how are you gonna decide which, uh, which schools get the programs?
So I guess I'll go through each of your comments. Um, your point about the surveys is well-taken. We try to encourage as many students as possible to take the survey, and the principals were a big help in, in doing that. Um, but we can look at some other ways to get some additional feedback from students and community members, um, with regards to the.
Mr. Duran, Mr. Duran? So I think Mr. Harris can help us with that. So I think he has some ideas about how we can do that, and I know, I, I don't want him to stop asking questions, because every time he asks one, he gets an assignment. But I, I do think that he will be able, um, to, to assist us with that.
That'd be fantastic. Uh, with regards to the senior project, um, your point is well-taken. That's actually one of the things that the, um, committee is looking at in terms of how do we make it, it's, we're calling it a senior project, but essentially it's a cumulative body of work or portfolio that a student works on over their four years of high school. And so we just have to make it very explicit, um, as we begin to develop the senior project in terms of what phases students would complete and what years. Um, so when we come back, uh, I'm sure at some later time, we can talk more in depth about the senior project and where we are. Maybe we need to rename it, um, so that people understand that it's really a, a senior portfolio of their body of work, uh, that a student has done for the past four years. Um, with regards to the alternative schools, we opted not to, um, put them into the academy structure at this point in time, because we want them to be able to come up with their own model, their own path for the students and the populations that they serve. So our office, um, Department of Portfolio Schools, is looking at what programs might be, um, w- work most effectively for those student populations. In fact, um, I got emails from two of our alternative education principals just yesterday. Um, we, I asked them to go look at a particular program, um, in Baltimore, and, uh, they saw that program and came back and thought it was fantastic. And so they're looking and exploring their own path in terms of what they want to implement in their particular schools. Is there anything else anyone will say? On page thirty-six, thirty-seven, uh, with regards to, uh, implementation, no, they would not be implemented in all schools in, uh, that particular cluster. So every cluster will have access to all of the academies. There will be some exceptions like BPA, um, because of the expense of, um, a BPA program. So what we're talking about is every, again, every, every cluster will have every program. And so when we say Cluster One and Cluster Three, we're talking about one high school within that particular cluster. Ideally, what we'd like to do for next year is to have at least one program introduced in every cluster. So that's the goal for next year. So every clu- to get every cluster at least one new program.
Okay, um, I'm still a little unclear about the cluster setup, and I'm assuming it's, um, I'm assuming that the reason why you're giving us this assessment now is because of the five-to-seven-year move-out. So let me just ask the question. So if I, if I live in Cluster Four, I can attend the Science and Tech Program in Cluster Five at Oxon Hill?
No, if you live in the Science and Tech Program area right now, because that's a tested-in program.
Exactly.
And remember, the academies are for everyone.
Okay.
So that those aren't tested-in programs, so we have four tested-in programs right now.
Okay.
And so wherever those students are right now that feed those four tested-in programs,
Correct.
that will continue.
Okay.
So that continues as-is.
So, okay, so then, okay, so I think I now have it.
Okay.
So I can attend a Science and Tech Program in my cluster without testing in? But if I test in, I go to one of the test-in locations?
I would say let's take
No.
a different example other than Science and Tech.
Well, see, that's the one that people are.
Because that's tested in, and so if you, as, um, Dr. Height mentioned, if you live within the boundary, whatever your existing boundaries are for a Science and Tech Program, when you test, you would still go to that designated, um, school for Science and Technology.
Okay.
The tested programs are separate from the academies. So these academies don't work, with the exception of BPA, don't require any testing. So again, this is about equity and access, so any student can attend any of the academies. And so, for instance, if you were to pick Architecture and Design, um, you could go to whatever school in your cluster offered Architecture and Design.
Okay, so, so that's why you don't wanna have that Science and Tech part of the conversation, because of those, those locations necessarily.
Yeah, but Science and Tech will not become an academy.
I understand, but you can test in, so you. So, no matter where you live in the county, you can test into Roosevelt, Oxon Hill, or Flowers?
That's correct.
Just as you do now.
Just as you do now.
Right.
And that has nothing to do with the phase-in process, the five-to-seven-year process?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm a little disappointed in the alternative ed component of it. And the reason why I say that is because I'm not sure, you know, we sort of equate alternative ed either with career tech for some reason all the time. And I really, I think for like four years, have really been wanting us to make that a priority. That it's not a second thought. It's, this is incorporated into how we do our work in the county. And that students, I think even Mr., one of our very first student member who went to Forestville Military Academy wanted to drive home the point that just because it was a military academy didn't mean that it was for kids who had behavioral problems. But, but I think that we don't necessarily message that clearly there are students who might live in a cluster that doesn't fit in that academy structure at all. But we do have a location and we do have something that we believe has been an assessment for this child based on their needs. And it just seems like the alternative ed piece is alternative. You know, we kinda leave it lagging behind. And I really, I'm pretty passionate about that. I really want us to think harder and sort of have a deeper conversation around that. So, thanks, Mr. Harris, for asking that question. Because I wrote here, do we think alternative ed and career tech is the same thing? Is that what we're clumping into? And I don't think we should. But I don't know that I see it as defined. You know what I mean? And then.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, part of this is also trying to increase student interest as well. So that if we think about who's selecting alternative ed is because the comprehensive program may not have worked for that young person. It doesn't mean that that young person is any less intelligent than the students who are there. So, hopefully, with the construction of the academy model, then we will actually draw some students who are currently now thinking that the alternative option is their only option for them because it's different than a comprehensive model. We now may have new models that they may select. But I agree. I think that we cannot ignore the fact that we also have what's considered all non-traditional schools right now. And they have to be included as part of the equation because we want those students to make choices as well.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring that out. Okay, it looks like I'm starting, well, Ms. Waller? And then I'll start over.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to going into this next phase also. One question, how did you choose which clusters were going to be laid out in the upcoming years? Or who would be first in what order? How did you come up with that?
So, the clusters for next year, we're hoping to actually have one program at least in every single cluster. Again, trying to look at equity and access. So, in terms of which programs to implement in the upcoming years, now that is based upon those that we can implement, again, kind of in that prioritization, those that require, I'll be quite honest, the least or little amount of capital investment upfront. And then those that require more of a significant investment in the later years.
We had a larger return of students responding to your survey than our community members and I believe the parenting community. And that's one reason why I'm asking because a lot of times it's your parents that are looking ahead for their children's futures. And we did not hear from the community and the parents, I don't think, as much as we would have liked to have heard from them. And perhaps it will still be revisited. I mean, you know, I know we're laying out the timeframe for next year. And then, of course, we're living in a time where we are doing more with less. And that brings me over to page 40. And I want to ask about the cost. Page 39? Okay. We've had reduction in forces and furloughs. And what strategies are we going to use in getting the positions filled? What strategies are we going to use for going forth with this reform?
So, part of this, Ms. Waller, is, one of the reasons we tried to phase this out over a five-year period is really to allow us to also get in front of it with our CIP renovation process as well. So, we actually want the plan, secondary school reform, to inform the priorities set forth in CIP. So that we're not talking about money that we have to, we're talking about monies that are already available, hopefully, for capital improvement that could be used for this purpose. And that's why we're phasing it as we are. Now, it helps offset some of the costs, but nonetheless, there still will be costs for some of the programs outside of CIP. And that's why we're also phasing it to allow us an opportunity to plan for the movement of those resources. The final piece that I wanna add is, and I keep talking about student-based budgeting. So, that becomes still another component of this. And although that won't offset one-to-one the cost of implementing one of these programs, it will allow for some of these resources to follow students. And as students select into some of these academies, those dollars would be following those students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Iliff, Ms. Fletcher, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I wanted to follow up with, I was expecting to see some sense of which programs were gonna be in which schools. And I know that members of the community have testified at the public hearings about what programs they want in their schools. The high schools that are in my district, District Two, are Bladensburg, Parkdale, and Northwestern. And I'm not as familiar with all the programs and all of the high schools. But I know that Bladensburg has biomedical and they have the Child Development Program. And those are just, you know, they're already there. And so, really, it just needs to be a profile thing and, you know, enhance it a little bit and let kids go there. Northwestern, of course, Performing Arts, that's been in the air for a long time. They're already doing it. They have the Jim Hansen Program. And then, of course, at Parkdale, World Languages, they've got the International Baccalaureate. And it's kind of like the writing's already on the wall, so let's get going with it already. So, I'm not sure why other principals, you know, haven't been weighed in already because this has been a long planning time. So, I'd really like to see those schools named soon. The other thing that I am noticing about your phase-in is that you've got, you know, in year one, two programs going into cluster three and no programs going into two or five. And so, I just think that when we, I think that if your intention is to get something going into every cluster, I think you could probably manage to distribute that a little bit more evenly, especially in the first year. I think people would be sensitive to that. And then, finally, about the clusters themselves. So, cluster two is looking a little funny now. It's kind of long and stringy instead of being a clump. So, I mean, if you're living in the port towns, it's a haul to get up to Laurel. And so, I think that the idea that, you know, Bladensburg and Laurel would be sharing students, that's pretty darn expensive transportation-wise. So, I mean, I don't know if you have to stick with the idea of a cluster. You know, maybe it's just you can transfer to your surrounding schools. You know, and that that might be interlocking clusters in some places because, you know, folks in port towns can easily access Parkdale. And even Northwestern feels a lot closer for them. So, oh, they're in the cluster with Northwestern, that's good. So, anyway, that's it. Those are, I don't know if you have any responses for that. But what is your timeline actually for actually naming what programs are gonna be in what schools?
So, actually, Ms. Colton and myself are meeting with high school principals in November, actually, in a couple of weeks. So, as you said, we have a sense, just a staff, where we think programs would be a good fit. But we need to speak with principals and have them do their own evaluation of their schools to talk with their school staff, to look at their school community, and then have a dialogue around what programs would go into their schools. So, I agree, just as you looked at the experiences, the programs that you know currently exist in schools, we did the same thing. And so, again, we have some ideas of where we think a good fit would be for certain schools, for which programs. But we need to have that conversation, that dialogue with principals to get their thinking around it as well.
So, the dialogue is in November, I heard that.
The dialogue is in November, yes.
And then, the output is when?
So, we expect to have it shortly thereafter, so by the beginning of the new year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iliff. Ms. Fletcher?
And you addressed the alternative. We didn't mention special education. We didn't mention evening high school. And your immersion schools, I can understand the foreign language. Where will your Montessori students fit into this? There's no picture there for your Montessori students. And my other question is your contract schools. I have been asking and asking ever since that was presented to us in terms of contract schools. And are you going to explain what those contract schools are? Because what we got, and the reason why we accepted the contract schools was because our teachers in-house would be able to come together and say, say your cluster, this is the subject material we want to teach and we want to do the contract school on that. I still have the book, the notebook that was given to us. I know it like the back of my hand. But I would like to see the encouragement, because you say contract and charter schools. I would like to see the encouragement of staff in-house, particularly our instructors who have that skill and want to really go and do that, to do some of those contract schools.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. We would encourage that as well. And as a matter of fact, have a process, as you indicated already, for people to submit contract ideas. And as a matter of fact, we had a proposal for, I think, a law and public policy school that was submitted as a charter proposal. But it could have easily been a contract proposal. And so, we actually do want to encourage individuals to, inside of some of these career pathways. And these are all career and technical pathways from the curriculum at the state level. And so, we're looking at all of these clusters and these structures around finance, hospitality. Those are all pathways inside of MSD's content and curriculum. However, it's very easy that if, in fact, someone wanted to say, we're looking for, I teach individuals to repair vending machines. And I would love to open a school to train students to do that. So, it's very easy for us to match that to one of those content or career and technical pathways. And that's very easy for us to do. And we have that already, but that would mean that they would submit a proposal. We would approve that proposal based on the outcomes of the contract. And in this case, the contract school could be co-located inside of one of their high schools or alternative schools.
What I'm talking about is the, and I'll give it back to you. This is when Dr. Dacey was here and that proposal for contract schools. Say you went to 2250 and Local 400 and HVAC. You wanted to have a school on that. Then they, the employees could say, okay, this is what we're going to do and submit that proposal. You go to the teachers' union and say, well, we see that, you know, you have teachers that are MIT certified, dah 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 dah. We want to do an engineering school. This is what we want, what can you give us? And the group of teachers come in and do that contract school. They get together and do it. What I hear you saying is the same as a charter school, but the little difference, if you're doing an RFP and you're going out, I'm just asking internally, what are we using, utilizing our staff? If they could possibly do some of those contract schools and we go to them?
Ms. Fletcher, that was the example I was using when I was talking about the alternative certification. So that we can teach students in our garage that, where we maintain buses. And it fits very nicely into the career cluster of transportation. And we can teach students to work on diesel engines or, and so, that's one of those career and technical pathways that we could actually use. And you're right, inside of that notebook that you referenced, it is a process for RFAs to request proposals inside of some of these content areas. And yes, we will do that. In fact, we do that once a year now. And we request proposals for things for which we're interested in doing. We just haven't had the financial wherewithal to support those requests as they come in. But we do that once a year now.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher.
On our strategy team is the Director, interim Director of Special Education. And so, in developing the cluster model, we also look to ensure that there were special education services provided in each of the clusters. And we're working with our Curriculum and Instruction Department on how do we modify the curriculum for, let's say, a particular program of study to be able to accommodate our students with special needs. In terms of the immersion piece, as you mentioned, we also have the global studies programs that we're trying to develop through the academy model. And I guess I'll ask Dr. Height to talk about the evening high school or Dr. Arvind Gass.
Yeah, and in fact, I just wanna talk about Montessori for a second. Because right now, our model stops at eight. And those students actually then move into like a program of study at the high school level. But we don't have a high school equivalent for the K-8 Montessori or pre-K-8 Montessori program. With the evening high school, I haven't really thought, that is not included, Ms. Fletcher, because many of the students who are matriculating in the evening high school are also enrolled at some point during the day. And we have, I think, at Northwestern now, we have 100, I think it was 100, when I, last time I talked to Mr. Kitchens, it was right at 100 students who are only enrolled in evening high school. And then, all of the other 200 or 300 students who are there are also dual-enrolled in a comprehensive school during the day.
Can I, before I go to Mr. Harris, just to kind of follow up on this. So, but the whole notion around Montessori tag, for example, we only wanna improve those areas. So, that shouldn't change other than the fact that since you have world languages as part of what should be happening, it should actually expand beyond the eighth grade if this takes, you know, takes on the model that we wanted to have, correct?
Not necessarily.
I know that's, well, that's separate from Montessori, what I'm saying.
Oh, yes, that's separate from Montessori.
For the emergence, for example?
Yeah, the emergence could actually, we could actually build in an articulated pathway so that they actually expand right into ninth and then on into 12th. And you almost have a K-12 model around immersion.
Okay.
That, we don't have a K-12 model to benchmark for Montessori, only K-8.
And what are the, so what happens in other jurisdictions? Or what are some examples that we could look to to really look at that?
You know, I was asking Ms. Chappell, I was out at John Hansen yesterday. And we were talking about the, we were talking about how we would be able to look at both Montessori in the future years and immersion with a view towards expanding both programs. And I specifically asked about this notion of, so what's the possibility of expansion to a high school model? And she said, I think there was one in the country.
Right.
And most move from, most move from the Montessori program at the eighth grade into a high school. And because they're getting ready for the college experience. And she was hard-pressed to think of a model that we could fashion this behind to expand Montessori. But hopefully, they would have choices. But hopefully, they would have choices as well inside of many of these academies.
Because it's much different to transition from eighth grade into high school than Montessori when you're in elementary trying to go into a comprehensive environment. That's just much different. Um, okay, and so, Mr. Harris?
What's is, what's the difference between engineering and science and science and tech? What's going to be the difference?
So engineering and science includes programs such as Project Lead the Way. Um we also are looking at, actually, I want to look at the course catalog here that we've been developing. Um and some other areas of engineering that aren't currently within the science and tech program, such as, we have the aerospace engineering that would cross between both the engineering and science and also our transportation technologies. We have environmental sciences programs such as, you know, green technology and things of that sort. So these are programs of study that aren't currently the focus, so to speak, in the science and tech program.
And also, could I get an update on what exactly the science and tech program is about? Um meaning, um what was the purpose it was it was created? How the the course or how the the courses they take are different from the regular students? Because when I've gone to different schools and talking to the students, a lot of them say that um that they are, that the students, regular students are taking the same courses that the science and tech students are taking. So um I'm, now I'm starting to wonder if students can take those courses. If like, um I want, I can't remember what school it was, but they said that the course for the science and tech were just composed of AP courses and that any student could take those AP courses. So if that's the case, then why, um, why, you, why is it a test-in program? Why isn't it just opening up to all students and different things like that? So can I get an update on that?
And it would be, that question is appropriate, Mr. Harris, if it is the same. But I don't think it is the same. And we will get you that information in terms of course descriptions for science and tech versus course descriptions for the other schools.
Mr. Harrison, and it's not, you can actually look at our current course offering booklet to see that there are specific courses that are for just science and technology.
Say that one, I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Our current course offering booklet has specific courses that are just for science and technology sites.
And the other piece that I wanted to add, Mr. Harris, is that the science and tech programs, it's unfortunate they're called science and tech because they're really research programs. Because STEM is such a popular term now, and we have Project Lead the Way with pre-engineering and biomed. So we have many, STEM has gotten um some energy around it. But it's not to say that STEM and the science and tech are the same thing. Science and techs are really research programs. And and I believe one of the board members asked, will there be, I was mistaken, she said, we don't want to go there. Because there's, there will be so many different technology pathways. There'll be IT technology and biomed technology and pre-engineering technology, aeronautics technology. So it's going to be quite a wide range.
And a question for Ms. Fletcher is, how will Matthew Henson with the social technology program fit into this? Solar energy, I'm sorry, solar energy. Matthew Henson?
We'd have to go back and investigate that one.
Oh, green tech, okay.
Yeah, so that's green tech. And as a matter of fact, that program is designed to be a training program for adults and students around um jobs in the in the um green tech field. And so part of that is, it's it's not a component because it's developed um with the consortium of the Community College and the University of Maryland and many of the federal and state organizations, Department of Energy. But we have to account for the students that it may pull out of the other schools. And so a part of it falls under the, was it environmental?
Environmental sciences.
Environmental sciences cluster, but that's where that program will fall, Mr. Harris. But it will not be an academy located in another school. It would be more like middle college. Um so that students would have the opportunity to go over and participate in that. But by the same token, we have to account for, how many students is that pulling out of the general population for all other high schools?
Thank you. And as we wrap up, I would say, um I guess it's, we sort of have these separate conversations, but I, and I don't want to make an assumption, but so for our talented and gifted students, the assumption is that they will just continue to move into whatever areas of study that they want to. Um and we'll, we'll know and we believe that we'll have the rigor required to to sort of meet those demands inside of this whole reform effort. That's a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to make an assumption. Um so what's the next steps, Dr. Height? At some point, the board will need to um vote on whether or not this is the direction, I suppose, that your, your recommendations around this. And seeing as how we're entering into budget season, uh it would seem appropriate that the achievement pieces would be directly tied to funding.
Yeah, so it's um, it it actually will be a set of strategies moving forward. So a couple of things that we're asking specifically. One is that we champion this whole, uh this whole perspective of a graduate profile. So what is it that we want our students to be able to do upon graduation? So that's part of it. So we would love for the board to adopt this notion and champion the profile of a 21st century graduate. Everything else is really the, will be a process for approval around policies um and procedures that would need to change. For instance, Ms. Fletcher asked about promotion and retention. So that could possibly be a policy that would need to change. A graduation requirement will need to change. And we would have to bring that back to you for for approval. And we would, we would reference the secondary school reform as a, as a plan. All of the other things are really expenditures that are either inside of our capital improvement budget or inside of our normal budget. And as a function of both capital improvement and our normal budgeting process, we would be bringing those items to the board and we would be asking for support there. And then finally, just the support of a new um and revised core curriculum so that the fundamental skills for all students will change. And it will be a much more rigorous experience for all students. And we would have to then backward map that into the middle schools and into the elementary schools.
Thank you. Um I think, I think that's a good plan going forward. I think Ms. Island's point around transportation has to be really delved into more succinctly, if you will. Um so then, as we do our agenda settings and moving forward, we'll um address this issue accordingly. I think the community is excited about it. We were with the community this very week. And it seemed like the topic was clearly secondary school reform. Much of it was whether or not, you know, I'll still be able to go to the school I want to go to. Um but I think the ability to provide these opportunities for our students is a move in the right direction. So we look forward to the continued conversation. Thank you, Dr. Height. Thank you, Ms. Durant. Thank you, Dr. Arbogas, um for all that you've had to say around this topic.
Actually, do want to thank.
And Ms. Golson.
Yes, I actually want to thank Ms. Durant, Ms. Golson, Dr. Arbogas, Dr. Whitehead, and everyone who contributed to this. It was, as you can see, I think it was seventeen subgroups that actually worked on this proposal. And they've been working for some time to to bring this. And the amount of comprehensive planning and strategic thinking that went into this was just phenomenal. So I want to thank them publicly for their work. I want to move to the next topic, Madam Chair. The next topic is our finance audit and budget update. And specifically, we want to spend some time this evening to talk about a Race to the Top application. As you know, Maryland was one of the states that was fortunate enough to win Race to the Top funding. And we want to talk a little bit about what that means for us and a proposal that we have to submit to the state as a result of that. Then I'm going to transition and ask Mr. Stansky to give us a financial trend and outlook moving forward. And so specifically with information about the Education Jobs Bill. So we're going to begin with Dr. Arbogas and then move to Mr. Stansky. Since that presentation is up, we will just begin with Mr. Stansky and then we'll go to Race to the Top afterwards.
Thank you, Dr. Height, members of the board. September twenty-ninth, our audit was completed for fiscal year two thousand and ten. And normally, what I would, what I would do is sort of give an overview of how the, how the year looked. And I'll still do that, but I thought it would be interesting to kind of give a four-year sort of historical perspective on uh on where expenditures have been in in the school system. And I think what the board will find and and the public, it was very interesting, is what you'll see is um what an economic boom looks like and then what an economic recession looks like. So we'll start just real quickly with the FY twenty-ten audit. And happy to report for the second straight year that we received an unqualified audit with no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, meaning no audit findings. So I just want to give a quick thank to my, thank you to my team again for all the hard work and accomplishing that for the second straight year. Uh we're, we're, thank you. We're very proud and, and you know, as, as the years go on, this, this will hopefully just become just a happenstance and just something that we would just report out quickly. But we do like to remind you guys that, you know, when you, when the board first came on, that we had twenty-five audit findings. And and so now for the second straight year, we have zero. So we're, we're pretty happy about that. But with that being said, there's always room for improvement and auditors are always quick to point that out. And they have identified four areas for us that they wanted us to kind of focus in on over the next year, two of which they had mentioned in the previous audit letter. First is our OPEB liability and our lack of contribution to other post-employment benefits. Um so to give you kind of, again, a quick overview, uh this is a ruling that came down from the General, the Government Accounting Standards Board back in early two thousand that governments would fund retiree health benefits on a pay-as-you-go basis. So your bills come in at seventy million dollars, you pay seventy million dollars. What the Accounting Standards Board had changed and required all governments to do is what they required private sector companies to do is fund your plan as if to fund the entire obligation and liability of of your retiree health benefits. Um given our financial situation, we have been unable, as most government jurisdictions have been the last couple of years, to fund other than the pay-go obligations. Our, our now, our, our liability has moved, has ballooned to one point six eight billion dollars, um which would require a contribution of a hundred and forty million dollars a year to to fund that obligation. So to try and, you know, simplify the complicated issue, it is to say, if the school board were to go out of business, you should have enough money stored away to fund the obligations that you promised your retirees. The private sector reaction to to this accounting rule has been to rid themselves of retiree health benefits and allow the federal government to do it. Governments obviously have have chosen to try and continue to fund it. Um but right now, given, you know, the financial situation, what we can afford is just a pay-as-you-go type uh type plan, which most, as I said, most governments are currently doing right now and just unable to meet that obligation because it is just so high. Uh another, another issue that came up was time card approvals for substitute teachers. We were at roughly seventy-eight percent approval for substitutes last year. This year, we upped it to eighty-eight percent, but it's still obviously not high enough. Um the sample that the auditors pulled still had a couple of cards that were not approved by by the principals. And so payroll is is working on, again, new procedures, new notifications to to supervisors who supervise substitute teachers, substitute bus drivers, to ensure that when those individuals are working, that when the time is recorded, that those cards are approved. And the last two items are minor items, is that we had one construction project that was complete that was not capitalized in our financial system. And we had rebate revenues that came in post-June thirtieth that we did not book as rebate revenues and that had been booked in a, what we call an audit booking. So that was labeled as well. And and the auditors had just pointed out that we should make sure that that booking is done prior to the audit's completion. Now, we'll kind of go in and talk about where where we've been and where we're sort of going. As you're well aware, revenues continue to decline. We will be making a presentation to the board on December fifteenth on the FY twelve budget. As you all know, the stimulus funding is going away in FY twelve. That is, for Prince George's County, a seventy-seven million dollar cut. That money that will no longer be here. Uh that will be slightly offset as we talk further about Education Jobs Fund and what the governor has been, what the governor has proposed to do with with those dollars. And our costs are continuing to exceed our revenue growth because we have no revenue growth. So we're going to start looking at the charts. Really what I want, want, want the the board to focus on here is look at from FY seven to FY eight, when I talk about economic boom. So this was the last year of the phase in implementation of the Thornton legislation. So the school system saw almost a two-hundred-million-dollar increase in revenue from fiscal year seven to fiscal year eight. And then as you see from fiscal year eight to fiscal year ten, we're starting to now see the decline. And if you added two more columns onto this chart with FY eleven budget, you'd see another thirty-million-dollar decline. And then as we go into FY twelve, you know, we're probably going to project an even further decline. Uh one thing I would like to point out is, probably should have had an asterisk under the county contribution for fiscal year ten. While we did receive six hundred and sixteen million dollars, we were asked to send back eleven point eight million dollars of that money. And also, six million of that was asked to not be spent so that we could spend it in fiscal year two thousand and twelve. Now, this chart, you're gonna, you're gonna see a lot of data, so I just want to point out a few items. One is that, you know, you hear a lot about school districts, Prince George's County, we're, we're top-heavy, administrative costs are high. Just want to point out that in fiscal year seven, our admin costs were around three and a half percent of the total budget. Fiscal year ten, we've got it down to three percent of the total budget. So you see when, when we're cutting, we're, we're cutting the right things. While instructional salaries have remained constant, around thirty-six percent of the total budget from FY seven through FY ten. But we do have some areas, even in in the midst of all these cuts, that I'd like to point out that continue to see enormous, enormous growth, but growth in general. One is special education. See a big jump from oh-seven to oh-eight. That was the implementation of means. That was the implementation and expansion of the autism program. That was, um, you know, reliance on more and more dedicated assistance, classroom assistance. And in quite frankly, you know, federal law that that requires you to meet a maintenance-of-effort requirement for special education spending in order to get your federal grant dollars. So even in the midst of decline, you're still seeing costs rise in special education. And but I want to point out, the big area where we're seeing continually cost increases is the category fixed charges. And what's, and the major expenditure in fixed charges is health insurance. Even with the reduction of of staff, we're continuing to see claims in in all four areas. Dental, vision, um general medical and prescription continue to rise at a, at a tremendous rate. In fact, from, our claims have risen seventy-five percent from fiscal year twenty, two thousand and seven to fiscal year two thousand and ten. Just again, to give you an example, medical claims in fiscal year seven, we paid out ninety million dollars worth of medical claims. Last year, we paid out a hundred and fifteen million dollars. To kind of drive the point home, where the biggest growth we're seeing is in prescription costs. We're seeing upwards around fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent growth. Fiscal year seven, we paid out thirty-eight million dollars worth of prescription costs. Fiscal year ten, fifty-seven million dollars worth of prescription costs. So when, when I tell you that we have to cut seventy, eighty, ninety, hundred million dollars, but you're only seeing total revenue growth decline by ten, fifteen million, it's these other costs, these benefit costs that continue to rise every year that exasperate the the budget gap that require us to cut in other areas because these, these, uh, these, these costs continue to rise. And it's really not unlike any other company or business right now that, you know, it was the whole reason, part of reason healthcare reform was passed at the federal level is because companies that offer health insurance, we're seeing these type of cost increases year after year. And and we are no different. So again, and we're projecting probably another eight to ten percent increase for next year in um, in our, in our health insurance costs. And this, again, just kind of shows that while we're seeing the decline in revenues, you know, expenditures such as healthcare and and other things are continuing to to increase. Next I wanted to show you is a chart, FTE chart. As you can see, in FY oh-eight, we had a maximum of nineteen thousand eight hundred eight FTEs. By fiscal year ten, we were down to eighteen thousand two ninety-one. And then the budget we just passed for fiscal year eleven had us at seventeen thousand nine hundred ninety-seven. So we're continuing to decline. So we're continuing to decline in, in the amount of full-time employees that are, that are working with the school system. Everyone's favorite topic, fund balance. As you can see, we had healthy reserves back in fiscal year 2007. We closed fiscal year 2010 with a unreserved, undesignated fund balance of 6.8 million. Now, of course, 6 million of that is budgeted for use in fiscal year 2011, so we're projecting only an $800,000 fund balance at the close of fiscal year 11. Of course, as your chief financial officer, I'd like to see that number higher, but given the revenue situation we have, the fact that it's positive is, is an accomplishment in and of itself. Again, another just graphic showing how the, the fund balances has been, you know, drawn down over the last four years. And, and really, the main reason is because our lack of revenues at the county and state level has forced us to dip into the reserves in order to maintain the services that we're, we're trying to provide our children. And so really to, to kind of close out this portion, again, we're, we're going to use this data, performance data, to really, you know, hopefully, you know, submit a budget to the board, a fiscal year 12 budget to the board in December that funds our priorities. But, you know, we're still seeing, we're going to see continuing costs in, in health insurance. We've, I think we've done a good job and this board has, had the foresight in investing dollars in energy performance for energy-efficient windows, energy-efficient boilers to lower our, our utility costs, and they have been going down year after year. But early, you know, early projections indicating for FY 12 that we're still going to see a revenue shortfall, mainly driven by the end of, of the stimulus dollars. And then just a quick update on the Education Jobs Bill. This is, there's been a lot of questions, a lot of uncertainties surrounding this. Dollar figures have been thrown around. So we did receive a letter from the governor indicating that 20% of the Ed Jobs Bill was going to be allocated to districts and, for fiscal year 2011, which equates to roughly $6.3 million for Prince George's County. We plan to present a, plan to the board on how to spend that money in the November FAB meeting. The rest of the money, 80%, will be used by the state to help offset the deficit that Mr. Lucchi had indicated earlier, about $1.1 billion for fiscal year 2012. So with that, Madam Chair, concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky. Colleagues, questions, comments on the grueling budget questions, issues presented? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for the presentation. I know we were supposed to have this back in last week at our finance audit and budget. I think it's just an ongoing conversation that we have to have. And, and I also think it's important that we continue this conversation because I think sometimes when we talk about the budget in, in, in the public's perspective, you know, we may not necessarily delve deep enough again so that you really understand, you know, parents are going to say, yeah, but I, my kids still have to pass the HSAs, my kids still have to do what they have to do. And so thank you for your diligence along this, this area, and we look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you very much, Dr. Height.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky, and thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to also add that, you know, we're proud of the fact, and I know all of you are as well, that as in Goal Five and what it states inside of our strategic plan, efficient and effective operations, one is really to make sure that we're not wasting money by having to send it back to MSD because we're mishandling budgets. So the fact that we have the second unqualified audit in as many years is quite an accomplishment. I just want to acknowledge the work of Mr. Stansky and his budget department. And I also want to welcome Mr. Stansky back because even with all of this going on, he is the new proud father of two additions in his household, twin girls. And so, welcome back, Mr. Stansky.
How's that for a pleasure?
That was one of the reasons that he, I'm sure he wanted to come to the meeting tonight too, by the way. We're glad to have you back. So with that, Dr. Arregas, if you walk us through some of the information about Race to the Top, thank you.
Good evening. We're going to, we were the recipients of $23.5 million as part of Race to the Top. We're going to use the entire amount to fund the prescription bill. No, no. The, the Race to the Top grant is really driven by Maryland, and it's important to remember that it's Maryland's application, not Prince George's County's application. So our task is to align our projects directly. They, and I want to kind of lay out first what the categories are. The very first goal for Maryland's Race to the Top was a world-class education, specifically addressing student achievement and closing the achievement gap. And then there were four assurances. The first assurance was standards and assessments. The second was around data systems. The third was great teachers, great leaders. And the fourth was around low-performing schools. And then there was a final competitive invitational specifically around STEM. So what we had to do is we had to align our projects around those. And what you see up on the screen, and I'll walk you through and talk about how each of these projects aligns. World-class education, student achievement, closing the achievement gap. We are, we dusted off our application for the innovation grant that we didn't receive around College Board. So College Board is actually the expansion and audit of our advanced placement and high school culture around college-going culture, including international baccalaureate. This is the largest of the 12 projects that we have set for Race to the Top, coming in just over $7 million. So it's about 1/3 of the total budget. What will happen here is College Board will come in and do an audit of both the culture and the efficacy of advanced placement courses. And actually, they'll take their audit all the way down into middle school and then make recommendations. Then the rest of the grant is very much around expanding course offerings and support courses and professional development for teachers around advanced placement. The second, a smaller project related to student achievement and closing the achievement gap is a project with Hillside. It's not up on your screen, but Hillside Work and Scholarship. This is a group that looks at high-risk students. They're actually going to identify 32 students who have severe, high-risk for graduation. And they'll be, what I like about Hillside is it's not only a mentoring program, but it actually is more like a wraparound service, get involved with the families, actually do job coaching for these youngsters. Hillside is, and another good thing about Hillside is they're heavily supported by external funders, and Wegmans is the largest funder. So we're real excited to have this connection with Wegmans, and we, we think Hillside will bring us good things. The first assurance is standards and assessments. We actually have a project on the second screen. No, actually, I took it off. We were considering some assessments around a growth model using our FAST data. We've decided to pull that project off of Race to the Top, and that will actually be a project under the Accelerator Grant with Gates. So we are, so we're moving ahead with assessments, but we are not making a part of Race to the Top. As far as standards, our work with the Institute for Learning, IFL, is very much related to the Common Core. Again, we are not putting that in our Race to the Top. We're actually going to use Title II funding to, to continue our work for IFL. The next assurance is data systems, and we have three projects under data systems. The first project, and actually, it's on the next slide. The first project is the data warehouse. And with the data warehouse, what we're going to do is we've actually started this work, we want to complete this work. The data warehouse does a couple of things for us. The key performance indicators that we've shared over the last several board meetings talked about, those will be now available both district-wide and school-wide. So schools will be able to use the data warehouse for quality, real-time data to determine how they're making progress towards the goals. Second project is around data quality. And we have to be sure that the data that we're looking at is actually of value. So the data quality piece will be our second project. And then the third project is actually related to professional development for teachers and schools around collaborative planning and a program called DataWise, which is actually out of Harvard. And this is a pretty intense program about how to use data to analyze instructional practice and change instructional practice. So those are three projects under data systems. The next thing we're going to talk about, I'm going to go back a slide, is great teachers, great leaders. This is a pretty significant part of the Maryland application, very much related around teacher evaluation and principal evaluation. I have to tell you, Prince George's County is actually a leader in this field through our partnership with our bargaining units. We have not included a project around teacher and principal evaluation because that's actually the work that we're doing with Gates and the TIF grant. But I did want to mention that Prince George's County was specifically mentioned in the Maryland application as being a leader in teacher and principal evaluation. So we were very pleased by that. We actually have six projects under great teachers, great leaders. The first project is related to looking at incentives that we offer teachers. And this is actually a small ticket item, and I'll tell you why in just a minute. We have our work with ERS that's actually looking at the efficacy of everything that we do in our system and attaching a cost value to it. So we've asked ERS to expand their study to look at stipends and amolments that we offer and relate them back to student achievement. Then what we, now, that's already part of the Gates work. What we would like to do with our partners, with our bargaining units, is then to look at those stipends and say, which ones are related to student achievement? And then link those to working in low-performing schools or schools that are hard to staff. Now, the reason that we have a relatively small budget amount, we only have $1 million for this, is because Race to the Top said, do not do a project that you cannot fund after four years because of the funding cliff. So we, what we would like to do with the money is actually use it as, from a pilot perspective, and then once the four years is over and once we've decided which ones are really attracting teachers to work in high, in low-performing schools, that will actually come out of what money we're already spending in the operating budget. The, I think the takeaway from this first project is actually insights that our teachers' union has given us about what makes teachers happy. And they've been very, very clear that it's not always money. It's very much working environment, it's, it's individualized professional development, it's planning time, it's leadership roles. So those are the things that we would like to examine in project number one. Project number two is with the School Leaders Network. And that is creating professional learning communities for teachers around specific content areas across schools. So when we normally talk about professional learning communities, we talk about them internal to the schools. With the, with our second project under great leaders, great teachers, this will actually be professional learning communities across schools, and that'll be run by School Leaders Network. Third project is looking at the leadership career ladder for teachers. Why do you have to leave the classroom to be a school leader? And that's the question that we want to ask. And are there ways that teachers can actually develop leadership skills and have leadership roles in schools without specifically leaving the classroom? So that's the third project. Fourth project switches over to administrators. And this is to really enhance all of the programs that we have in attracting administrators, retaining administrators, and training administrators. And this is really a group of projects, including LEAP and NISSL and New Leaders for New Schools. But we're adding one project, and this is the work with the University of Virginia in, creating, in preparing principals to be turnaround principals. We're very excited about this. This is a project that we actually wrote up for a school leadership grant, which we did not receive. So we think this is a really good opportunity for us to develop leaders specific to turnaround schools. The fifth project is coaching for both teachers and principals, relatively small-ticket item. And then the last one is looking at the teacher pipeline, specifically our alternative teacher certifications, including Teach for America and resident teacher programs. How do we support those? How do we ramp those up? What things are they doing that we can then replicate when this grant is over? So those are the six projects under great teachers, great leaders. The next assurance is low performance. We do not low-performing schools. We do not have a specific project for low-performing schools. However, almost all of the projects that I've listed before actually link back to low performance. And for the competitive and invitational STEM, we are expanding our work with the National Commission for Teachers for America's Future and NASA Goddard to continue to develop modules around STEM activities, very much project-based learning that Mrs. Johnson was talking about earlier in the evening. This work has already started. Race to the Top allows us to continue this work. So the, we are still in draft mode. The plan is due next Wednesday. We are, we'll spend all weekend trying to make this, trying to put this together. The challenge is making sure that our language matches exactly to the state language. So that's an overview of where we are with Race to the Top.
Just want to add one component, that the state and the federal government inside of this proposal was very clear on making sure that we could articulate our ability to sustain anything that we do with these monies because they don't want us to experience the same funding cliff issue that we will likely experience when the ARIFunds run out. So part of this, and the state has been very clear, that they're not interested in adding FTEs that cannot be sustained beyond the allotment of, of the Race to the Top funds.
And with that, Dr. Height, we did add, we have two Broad Fellows that, to help us manage the grant, but both of those positions will end at the end of the four years. So, Dr. Height is correct. We've tried to add no FTEs with this money.
Thank you. And did you say that each jurisdiction will be required to do a submission similar by next Wednesday?
Yes, that is correct. And the only, there are two jurisdictions that are not participating, and those two jurisdictions did not sign on to the application. I think that was Frederick and Montgomery, yes.
Right. And, and I know they still get funding, but they don't have to submit anything. And the state doesn't have to supplement, like, say what would happen in that case? Not what would happen. I know it's state dollars. Would the state, in submitting our proposal for the state, put something together to say this is a statewide situation?
Yes. In fact, they've already constructed a framework inside of their application, and they are anticipating that many of the applications will hit on the pieces inside of their application. The other part of your question, which is interesting, is that the state is also, not, not the state board, but the state legislature, has also re-crafted any, a new evaluation system. So you have that piece of it that will also apply to those two counties that did not sign on. So they actually do not have the resources to do some of the things around that evaluation model. Now, since the state legislature implemented that as a new law, that has actually slowed now because it's also being revisited as whether or not it is meeting the intent of the original legislation. So that's in front, that's back in Annapolis, being worked through with the Education Committee. And the state board has actually slowed its, its efforts around constructing this new evaluation model, if you will.
Okay. And Race to the Top won't be slowed as a result of this interpretation issue?
No, we hope not, Madam Chair. And so part of that is, I'm at a superintendent's meeting tomorrow, and we're going to learn more about that. But we, we hope that does not put it in jeopardy. However, the other part of it is that it only represents a small portion of the points that were allotted on the application. And as you know, Maryland had one of the highest scores on the application and the highest score for any state that was submitting their application for the first time.
Okay. That's going to be interesting to watch. Ms. Johnson?
Dr. Height and Dr. Arregas, I read the executive summary that you sent, which did the detail regarding the projects. And one project has, was not articulated in the list that you gave. Where are you on that now? There was one that you did not have an identified project for it yet. Have you done that?
I can't remember which one that was, Ms. Johnson. I'll have to look back at that executive summary.
Okay, fine. It is in the executive summary. What I'm, what I'm curious about, I understand about the sustainability, that clearly is important. However, what I need to know is, what criteria did you use or did your team use to make sure that use to make sure that the project work can be sustained and the source of sustainability that you've identified in the school budget? Not just for today, but at five-year, six-year growth, you know, long-term. And the other question is, within your executive summary, you, for some of the projects, one of them was going to have a hire of a Broad Fellow. I sent a question about that, but the answer has not come back as to, is that person currently in the system, or are we in the process, you're in the process of hiring? And the other is the requirement that Teach for America is going to be utilized to do some of this work. The wrap question is, where are we in building the capacity within PGCPS so that we are not having to seek outside? And the sustainability in, how are we growing the richness within PG, I mean, we've been project to death. Don't we know at this point how to get it done? Where are our people? And, and that is a big concern of mine. Are we growing our own staff?
And part of the application process that the state did, Ms. Johnson, around using organizations like TFA, was really for the state to learn how to implement that process inside of the state without having to contract with an organization like TFA every year. And one of the things that we're looking at is, number one, for hard-to-staff places only. So this, it's not the wholesale group of individuals, but for those areas in which are, that, we are really having difficulty staffing schools. And I'll use an example, this year, with our turnaround schools, it, we would have been hard-pressed without that group of individuals, to get individuals who would have wanted to move into some of those areas. That, that's, that's the TFA. On the Broad question, the, the Broad resident, no, we are not hiring an individual that would be pending the approval of the plan, and the Broad resident allows us to get an individual that is project-based, and that, that person's skills would depend on what project they would be leading, and that is something that, where we pay half of a salary. So we don't pay the full salary, we pay half of the salary, and it's only for a defined period of time, so therefore, it's not a sustainability issue for us.
My last item is, the, we, we constantly hear "hard to staff." Where are we in terms of getting to the point that that phrase is going to disappear from PGCPS? And what are we learning, I mean, when I look at the data across these four years of schools, where they were when we came in, and some of them are just, it is magnificent what they have done in some of our schools that had that titling. So I am looking at what we've accomplished. When are we going to get out of where we don't need Teach for America? Why are we going outside? It is just a constant source of concern to me that these are built, they have children in them. These are communities that have great needs, and I want to know, when are we going to get to, like the Harlem Children's Zone and the Promise Zones that we've been talking about, to enrich the surroundings in which children are located so hard to staff can disappear from our lexicon? It is a great concern to me.
One of the things we're doing, Ms. Johnson, is trying to develop our own talent from when they leave our schools. As you know, we did a grant with the University of Maryland, we were successful with that, and it really is for minorities teaching science and mathematics. And we are looking for students who are in high school to move on to college, and then those students would then matriculate at the college and then come back and become our teachers. So we're actually starting to do that. We also talked before about opening a second middle college around education, so that we're beginning to use the middle college construct to really build individuals who can teach for us. But the, I would like to say that we will work, we've been working towards moving this hard-to-staff mechanism or description, but we have a problem right now with special education vacancies. You know, we have a problem right now with language, and, and we have a problem right now with some of the advanced areas in math, and so part of that is that the, even the university system in Maryland, although they graduate students who go into teaching, it's not a number that actually supports all of the systems in Maryland, the 24 systems in Maryland that need teachers. I think last year was approximately 2,000 teachers who were coming from all of the programs inside of the state, not counting those outside, but the need was something like 6,000, and that was primarily in Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Baltimore City, Anarundel County, and Baltimore County. And we're all competing for those, for those individuals. So it's, one of the things is to begin developing our own and looking for alternative pathways to certification, look for individuals who are coming out of some of these fields that we talked about earlier, that could also provide some expertise, and continue to move around and recruit some of the people from around the country to come to Prince George's County to teach in those hard-to-staff, hard-to-staff areas.
And that is, that is exactly what I wanted you to talk about. Too many people hear "hard to staff," and they think it's because there's something wrong with us. Every district in America is struggling to put teachers in front of children, because teaching has not been, for many years, a premier college graduation target, and they're going into other fields, primarily because they pay more. But we've got to build up the teaching core of America, and unfortunately, many of these alternative types of things is how we're getting them, and so I do thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Fletcher?
I was listening to, to your report, and the Hillside Partnership, one of the, the discussion, we're talking about hard-to-staff schools, the, I read something recently, and they were talking about the success of many of the charter schools and the schools in Finland is because they provide the wraparound services. My question is, as opposed to going out and getting contractors to do it, the wraparound services that the, the kids may need, have we talked to, to the health department, social services, that type of thing? And these are services that are provided, and I, I'm thinking of, although we want to provide these services to the kids, but the, the better use of the money, and if those services are provided through the, the county's health department, then why aren't we working in partnership with the county health department to do that, and this money can be used for something else?
Ms. Fletcher, I was smiling because I think it was last week, Ms. Lynch and I met with the new director of mental health, I'm sorry, social services, and we were talking about how we can integrate many of the services, integrate and align many of the services that we duplicate right now. And there are several agencies that are duplicating some of these things. And how do we form partnerships with individuals like Health and Human Services, Park and Planning, the police, and Family Services, so that we have this notion that we can help students from the time that they're born to the time that they finish school? Because we only have them 9% of the, of the total time, and we need other agencies to help us. So we're, we're actually beginning to talk about how we can utilize the services that are already being offered at the state and at the county level, and I want to, I want to also add that Dr. Schell has been very interested and both, and receptive to making sure that he can help us, particularly with some of the services that they provide already inside of the schools. So we're working on a plan to integrate all of those services, so that we're wrapping around our students those things that historically we've tried to do at schools. And every year, we're picking up more and more of those things, because every year we recognize more and more of the, of the struggles with our families and our students, but there are also organizations who are designed to assist us in those roles, so we're actually working to really develop that. We also wrote two Promise Community Grants, and we, we wrote two Promise Community Grants. We were not successful in, in receiving those grants, but we want to take the contents of those grants and use that as a blueprint for how we will work as inter-agencies to meet those needs inside of that grant.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Dr. Hyde?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next set of items are items under consent, and...
Actually, Dr. Hyde, we have to...
Oh, yes. We have one more discussion. It's item 6.3, and that's grading policy, and Dr. Arregaz will lead us through this conversation as well.
Good evening. We are, at the high schools only, we are moving from alpha to numeric, and why are we doing this? There's, we believe that a numeric grade actually is a more accurate reading of a student performance than the alpha grade. So now, the high school report card will have a two-digit numeric grade, anywhere between zero, well, actually, I guess you can get 100, so there's one way to get a three-digit, but from zero to 100 will now appear, and there will not be an alpha grade for each quarter. At the end of the year, they will see both the numeric grade and the alpha grade. I, I'm sorry that this is difficult to read, but this is actually what the report card would look like. So first quarter, you would actually see a number, and then, at the bottom of the report card, is actually a key, so that parents can say, okay, so an 85 is in the range of a B. There is a potential negative impact of moving to numeric grades. Moving to numeric grades has the potential to lower student grades, because numeric grades below 50, when you figure out an average, have a slightly, have a higher weight in a particular average. And to give you an example of that, if a student got a zero and a hundred, and you add those two together and divide them, then the average is 50, which would be an E. But if a student got an E and an A, and an alpha, and you averaged them together, the student would get a C. But what's important to remember with the numeric grading is that we want to make sure that we reward kids for working hard, coming to class, doing the work that they need to How do numeric grades work in a marking period? And what I've done here is I've given you a couple of examples. In the first example, notice that we have a zero, a 55, 71, 78, 81, the cumulative would be 285, the average is 57, would come out to an E. If those same numeric grades were alpha, two Es, two Cs, and a B would actually average out to a D. Another example, and I think the second example is the one that is probably going to be the one that we're going to deal with a little bit more. Notice that this student had a couple of As and three Bs, but they were low As and low Bs, so the final grade actually comes out to be a B. Also wanted to note, the decimals will not be reported, a .5 rounds up, and how do we deal with weighted grades like AP? We add 10 points to the final score. How will they work for the final grade? Well, it'll just be four numeric scores averaged together, but again, only the two digits will be, will appear. However, when we do grade point average, when we do transcripts, it will still be the alpha grade. How do we mitigate the negative impact? And the conversation that I want to have here is, I want us to start changing the conversation around grading. If I'm a teacher and I'm teaching you something for the first time, and the expectation is that you will not master it, but that you're practicing it, that's what I would call a formative assessment. When it's time to test for mastery is what we would call a summative assessment. I think that grades should represent more on the right side of the screen, the summative assessments, rather than the formative assessments. So we have to begin a process now of helping teachers to understand that you can't throw a grade while kids are still learning the process. You throw the grade when it's ready to test for mastery. So that's a, that's a piece that we are just beginning. So what we've recommended is to actually lower the value numerically of, say, a homework assignment that's practice as opposed to a quiz that's summative. Some additional thoughts. This new policy does not change in any way how teachers input grades, the computation of honor roll, weighted grading, valedictorian, salutatorian, printing the transcripts will all remain exactly the same, and we actually will have, we've actually set up an advisory in November, so that kids can take their first quarter grade and actually figure out what they need to do in second, third, and fourth quarter to get the final grade that they want. Questions?
Mr. Harris?
Dr. Arregaz, with this grading policy, I see the purpose of it, the purpose is to make it easier on everybody to compute grades, and I guess it makes it more accurate for the teachers, excuse, not for the teachers, for, to assess the student. But when I look at this grading policy, I see, especially with the culture that we have in Prince George's County public school systems, the culture combined with, with this new grading policy, what's really going to happen, what I see is going to happen is going to hurt the students. And the reason why I say it's going to hurt the students is because we have teachers, we have teachers in our school system, and they're not doing the formative, and they're not doing the formative, and they're doing the summative on all the assignments. Every assignment is, you know, worth more than one point, and, and I actually have classes where, when I, when I have to read the night before, I come in and take a test, and that test is not zero or one points, that test is multiple points. So you add those multiple points in, and now, and now we've gotten away from, when we look at the numbers in the grading policy, we've gotten away from a, an A is not just an A now. An A actually matters in what that percentage point is.
Absolutely.
So, so with me, I'm a 4.0 student. I've been a 4.0 student all my life. And now I look at my grade, now I look at my grades and I say, okay, it's going to be really hard for me to get an A as my final grade, because anybody will tell you, and you can talk to any student that really looks at the grades, you rarely get above a 95. If you give above a 95, you're doing, the teacher's doing something wrong, or you must just be very, very, very smart. Because it's almost impossible to get a 99, or to get a 100% in the class means that you did nothing wrong, and nobody does nothing wrong. So normally, what I've looked at in my grades is I normally get around a 92%, 92, 93 range. If I mess up one quarter, in one quarter, if I get an 85, pretty much my chances for getting an A in the entire year is gone. I have no chance of getting an A. And the reason, and I think that what this grading policy is going to do, it takes away the hope for our students. It doesn't, it doesn't, it, it doesn't, it takes away the hope for our students, it doesn't give us a chance, it, it, it takes the initiative for us to be rewarded for doing well. It makes that, it takes it from being here to right here. You get, you get very smart initiative. It doesn't reward students for showing improvement. A student that, a student that improves from an E to a, an E first quarter, to a D second quarter, to a C third quarter, to a B fourth quarter, is going to receive most likely a D on their report card. So the student's going to look at the end of the year, and they're going to say, you know what, I improved to getting a B average in fourth quarter, and now I get, and my final average is a D in the quarter. What, what did I do? What, I, I did everything that everybody asked. They asked me to go from a C and achieve as high as I can, the highest was a, was a B, and now I get a D on my report card. And I think that, we have to remember that with the culture we have, we're not, this grading policy is not going to help our students achieve a high academic standards, because I think this year, I think after this year, when students look at the grades and they say, man, I improved, but at the end, at the end of the day, my final grade is not, my final grade didn't show that I improved, it, it makes the student say, you know... It makes the student say, you know, why did I even try? And I remember, somebody said to me, you know, when people don't have hope, they give up. And I really feel that our students are going to give up on our, on chief, having our academic standards because there is no hope in this grading policy.
Do you want to read one? Couple points. Yes, I think it is more accurate. That was your first statement. It's probably a much more accurate reflection. Do I think grades will go down because of the policy? I agree with you. And is it related to the culture? I agree with you on that point, too. The culture has to switch in two major ways. The first one is that what we talked about, the formative assessment. The second culture change has to be standards-based grading, grading across, against a standard rather than compliance. And I'll give you an example, Mr. Harris. Giving grades for turning in your agenda or bringing in a Kleenex box has got to stop. That is not standards-based. This is a rigor-driven policy, and it will be painful. There is no doubt, it will be painful at first. But the intent behind it is twofold, rigor-driven and culture-changing towards a more standards-based program. And I think this is the place we have to start. But will this first step be painful? I think it will be. I completely agree with your assessment.
Okay, this is on as a discussion item. And the PowerPoint is labeled a policy. Is it a policy or an administrative procedure? Because we keep talking policy.
It's administrative procedure.
Okay, so in terms of timing, what are you proposing?
This was actually communicated at the beginning of this year, Ms. Hathaway Beck. So, this is actually, I know it was, it was a request, I think, from Mr. Harris to talk about the grading procedure. And this is the grading procedure that was communicated at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, okay. Did PGCEA ever weigh in formally on this? It talks in here about teachers have an opinion, and I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, we had a, you remember, one of the community forums a year ago, there was a lot of conversation about a grading procedure that really allowed for students to take off one quarter.
Right.
And still be successful. And if you recall, my desire at the meeting was really to go to a grading procedure that matched the level of rigor that we wanted all of our students to experience. And we also wanted to go to a numeric value like most colleges and universities and most other school systems across the country. And I think one of the things that is important is that there is a understanding that it is a good deal of grade inflation going on right now. And we don't want to measure compliance with requests. We actually want to measure content knowledge. And we want to have a more appropriate grading procedure that measures the knowledge of a student in order to do that content. Now, you have to juxtaposition this with the conversation we had a few minutes ago around the profile of a graduate. And if we're talking about a profile of a graduate being able to do things, we must be able to say that student is equipped with the knowledge and skills in order to do carpentry, do electrical, take a AP course. And as I, and I think Mr. Harris used a good example. I mean, he's a solid four-point-oh student. But if Mr. Harris continues with ninety-twos, he's right. It is going to be, he will, he will do well. But if he gets an eighty-five, yes, this will, because this is going to average that number. However, it will be, we think, a more accurate reflection of the student's content knowledge. It's not providing points for showing up.
Right. In, when students need their transcripts in the middle of the year to apply, when they're seniors, how is that done? That's just off the two quarters?
Yes, so I will respond to that. So, when students provide a transcript for a college, it'll be the, for their freshman, sophomore, junior year, it'll be a letter grade, and then, they attach their current grades, which are numeric, with the scale score for a transcript if they're doing early admission, yes.
Okay.
And that's what we currently do. They would still present their report card for whatever quarter it is for their senior year. In this case, it'll be numeric instead of the latter.
Thank you.
And Ms. Hathaway Beck, more directly to answer your question, PGCEA did work on the administrative procedure with us.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
As well as, as well as the ASASP, many of the representatives who are principals as well.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Ms. Johnson?
I had a very lengthy and vigorous discussion with my colleague, our student board member. And having been a teacher thirty-five years and clearly was deeply engaged in evaluating students, couple of things I think is important. Number one, a grade is supposed to represent how a student performed and perhaps a demonstration of the acquisition of knowledge on that particular subject. And numerical grades can vary. I think they do a better job of portraying that because you have a range of zero to a hundred. The other is, I am very concerned that too often, students' grades, whether they're numerical grades or letter grades, are based on too few assessments. I truly believe that student assessment has to be reviewed across multiple. As a classroom teacher, if you can find my old role books, and I think they're probably still warehoused somewhere, and I taught high school, my students averaged per quarter anywhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and fifteen grades. They had three a day. Because I wanted my students to perform in multiple ways, and they were recorded, and they were paper graded. And as a result, a student did not have to depend on really nailing that quarter exam, but they had a broad range. So, I think that when we look at grading, what do we want our students to show? What did they learn? And I am concerned that the grade or the GPA, we are more interested in what it looks like than what it represents in terms of knowledge acquisition. So, we have to, one, students need to be assessed more frequently. And number, and I mean really more frequently, in multiple ways, verbal, written, group-based, all areas in the learning process. And then, I think numerical grades will not be that much of a pain of adjustment because young people will see and be able to self-evaluate about the quality of their work because there is not just the assessment, but a review of the assessment of why that grade looks like it does. So, I would add that to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Harris?
And the second thing I wanted to ask, was, was Peaggrass contacted when you, when you were doing the AP? Was Peaggrass input added into the discussion?
I don't think so, Mr. Harris, no. Although, actually, the former student board member was involved in a conversation about going to numeric grades, yes.
I think that with anything that we do, anything that the board or anything that Dr. Height, Dr. Height, you and your captain do, I believe that Peaggrass, and I'm going to refer to him as our student union, I believe that our student union needs to be contacted, especially when it directly involves student achievement or anything that involves students directly. And the reason I believe that is because a lot of times, these, our students, we have you guys making these policies and setting these things, but if it's really in the best interest of our students, I think our students should have a voice in what is being, in what is being implemented. And I don't know if I need to present this as legislation or, or something, but I really believe that our student union needs to be involved in everything when it directly involves students. It needs to be contacted, their input.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ms. Fletcher?
I need for you to, there's another part of this. I know with SchoolMax grading, is there a requirement that a teacher must put X number of grades a week into SchoolMax?
It's a minimum of two per week, Ms. Fletcher.
A minimum of two per week. So, we're reading a story, and I'm asking you to write down your thoughts. We've been doing this for a week. Your thoughts. How can you grade someone's opinion on the SchoolMax? So, I can't do that. So, they did read it, so I'm going to put a grade in there on SchoolMax. This is what you're talking about in terms of not a true grade, right? I'm trying to make sure I understand.
When, when I think about formative assessment, that is the day-to-day, minute-to-minute feedback that children are giving to adults, and the adults then change their behavior based on that feedback. But at some point, we have to say, does this student master this standard? Does this student demonstrate mastery of the standard? And that would be what I would call summative grade. So, yes, I think your understanding is mine also.
Okay. The, the other part of this is homework. We, usually homework reinforces what you learned in school that day, or it could be in an introduction of what you're going to learn the next day. But what is taking place is homework is basically something you have not discussed. You come back to school the next day, you're given a test on it, and then, you move forward on something new. So, how do we, because I think it's this pressure that you have to have this in SchoolMax. In addition, you have to, I thought the curriculum was a guide, and some people see it as, this is what I have to do, and I have to be at this point on this particular day, and I'm sorry, I have to move forward. How do we fix this to get to where we want to be in terms of grading? I agree with the way you're, you're going to change it and the understanding of why we need to change it. But how do we get there?
So, I think one of the things, Ms. Fletcher, is that we look at, so the two grades per week don't, that doesn't mean that individuals are just to grade anything and call it a grade. I mean, and what we're looking for is, this is a part of the parent portal that provides parents information about the progress of their students and students' information about their own progress. And so, I think Ms. Johnson gave an example of a hundred and forty grades per quarter. I mean, and so, that's actually one way to look at that formative versus the summative. So, we actually want to capture progress as a part of that. Doesn't, that doesn't mean necessarily that everything is counted and weighted equally. And so, I think that's, that's one. And in that, in that posture, I think we also have to look at the factors. These are called grading factors. It says that, and I'm using this hypothetically, that homework is given one percentage, quizzes are given another percentage, tests are given another percentage, and then, when you throw all of those in the mix, either one can impact the other. Which means, you may not know the content, but because you've completed your homework and you participated in class, you've actually passed the class. And I think that we really have to look at those factors that will allow individuals to receive the adequate weighting of those assignments. So that if tests count more and homework, we recognize homework as practice, then quite naturally, it should count less, not the same. And I'm not suggesting it is the same, but I'm using it hypothetically. So, that's one way to get at it. The other way is really to, with professional development around the purpose of grades, and how do we access content knowledge? And how do we do that? And so, we, that has to happen at every grade level and at every area and in every subject and content so that our teachers understand that here's how we will give progress, here's how we will communicate progress, and here's how we will arrive at a final grade, and everyone is understanding what that means. As opposed to just having this notion of two, whatever two grades I can enter every week, I enter. Because that doesn't help parents either.
Ms. Waller?
Thank you. I recently engaged in conversation with some elementary teachers this week, and they were concerned about the grading of how the grades went into SchoolMax for your pre-K, kindergarten, first and second graders. And they felt that there wasn't, it didn't, they weren't able to really communicate to the parents, the students' achievements that they were making in those early grades. And of course, I feel it's very important at that period that parents know really what their children are doing. And so, that would be a concern of how we would, we work with that area and the, the lower grades, I guess, in elementary school. And certainly, I feel that the board has a responsibility as we go forth and we discuss reform to set the tone. And when we talk about, about academic achievement, we need to lay, lead the way in what we expect in a culture change. I think that it's important that an A is an A across the board, and I feel that with the numeric schedule, I believe that we could achieve that, and if it's explained, and we have the advisories like you mentioned, we could do that. I think it's, I think it's important that it's explained to our parents, it's communicated to everyone about the knowledge and the content areas. But I think that, you know, when you talk about the, the culture change, I think that it's really important, and it's important that we talk about cultural change and reform. It's all going to go together. Everywhere we go in the community, this is what we hear that people want, and that we want academic, you know, achievement for our students. And I believe this is one way that we can do it. And certainly, I think that if we can balance it out with the numeric numbers, I, I think it would be the way to go. And I believe the board has to set a tone for cultural change and let our constituents know that this is what we want and this is what we expect from our teachers and from our students. Thank you.
Ms. Waller, just want to let you know, we actually have been hearing from our pre-K and K and ONE teachers. And interestingly, they asked if they could have a text box where they could actually type in comments, and they felt that was a more accurate. So, we are listening to that piece. And the other piece that I wanted to mention is, we just did a professional development for our kindergarten teachers around Maryland school readiness. That is an evaluation that we do. And we set it up so that we actually had exemplars so that the teachers could compare their rating so that we were getting inter-rater reliability, so that we knew that all kindergarten teachers were calling the same behavior, this or that. So, we were real pleased with that professional development.
And I think that's important, and I believe that this was a young group of teachers, and they've been teaching on the average four to five years. And they got, they were talking about retention and what we were doing to keep our teachers and, you know, about them, I guess, feeling appreciated and, you know, no pay raises, no increases, you know, whatever. And so, this was one area that they felt that they could be more effective in reaching out was with that grading process. So, I'm glad to hear that. And they did talk about, they wanted to be able to communicate with their parents. So, that's great.
Thank you, Ms. Olive.
Oh, thank you. Um, well, I, I wanted to just say that this really demonstrates how important it is to have a student member on the board. I wouldn't have known that anything changed about our grading policy if it weren't for Mr. Harris, um, informing me. And, um, and I do hope that big changes like this, you know, we can have some dialogue. I know it's under the responsibility of the superintendent. I'm just wondering if there isn't some middle ground here? So, it sounds like what you're primarily trying to change is teacher behavior, and who's getting clobbered are students? Um, so, you know, if you're saying teachers are, are inflating grades, teachers aren't being serious about the assessment, um, teachers are not providing the grades for the right things, um, and so, we're gonna have a new grading policy to regulate teachers' behavior, but the students are feeling the brunt of it. Um, as it's presented in the materials, it sounds to me like, you know, that people who aren't, students who aren't performing at all, who aren't really participating, who are getting zeros, who aren't turning in their work, or not sitting for a test, um, they're the ones who are, um, you know, gonna get the brunt of it. But listening to, you know, a high-performing student like Mr. Harris, he's saying, well, hey, you know, I'm, I'm fully on it every day, and, and this doesn't feel fair. Um, I'm wondering if there could be a compromise where, um, you still get the accuracy of the individual grades throughout the marking period, and the end of the marking period still, um, is a, a numeric average of all of those numeric grades. Um, but then, once it's a marking period grade, it gets into an alpha, and so that your four marking periods get averaged, um, as for alpha grades. Could that be an acceptable compromise?
The, the, um, the problem with that, Ms. Iliff, is that we've already begun the year with a, a procedure that is numeric. And one of the things that, one of the things that, um, we shared last year was an intent to really look at the grade, the grading procedure. And we actually did have a meeting about that because we, um, communicated a document that had all of the nu, all of the possible configurations of alpha grades, and how those alpha grades ended up in a final grade. And it was so hard to understand that, um, I think we, we talked at, I talked, I submitted at that time that it was important for us really to have, um, just a, a numeric calculation of all grades. And that's when Mr. Burrows-
If I could interrupt, though, that had, that was, I think, different than what I'm suggesting. So, we used to have the whole, I think what Mr. Harris was talking about, that we sort of gave some formulation to give people credit for improvement. So, what, that's not what I'm suggesting. So, I'm not suggesting that the old way that we did it is the way to do it, but that we can be able to continue with this rigor, but that you just at least get the average of four alpha grades for your end-of-the-year grade point average.
I think that's what we do now. Yeah, you, you mean just make it alpha, just the alpha grades?
So, so, once you've got your grade for the quarter, and you got a 91-
Right.
And you got an 85, and then you got a 92, and then you got an 82. That, that would get averaged as an A, B, A, B. So, you, you'd have a 3.5 grade point average.
Wes?
So, Mrs. Iliff, that's part of the issue. When you have an 82, and an 85, and 91, and a 91, when you average that together, that's a B. Okay? And when you put it together with alphas, then it makes it an A. That's part of the problem.
Why is that a problem?
Because it's not an A, it's a B.
So, I don't know. I'm not with you on that.
Okay, so I'm almost scared to even think about weighing in on this, but let me just say that when I think about this conversation, the first thoughts that come to my mind is, what do I do with my students at the University of Maryland that I've been doing since 1996? And I haven't been doing the same thing since 1996 because the university has changed its grading policy, and its grading rubric, and its requirements for what is expected. So, when I think about, so when we talked about this, the grading policy we had in the past, um, I was completely confused because I'd never seen anything like that. I'm used to the 10-point scale, and I understand that, you know, if you make an F, if it's, you know, which, uh, Mr. Harris actually really explained to me, no, Miss Jacobs is not the same if you fail, because it's a lot more points on that failing side of things. But when I think about preparing our students, and I think about the fact that there is a difference between listing or giving me a definition of something, and comparing, contrast, and distinguishing something, that that tells you whether or not I have the knowledge, whether I know what it is that you've taught me, if you've taught me what I'm supposed to get. So, when I was asking the questions, my question is really more around, um, what does this look like compared to our conversations about global market, and understanding what's, what the comparisons are, understanding, um, what the expectations are at the college level? Because how can we have a conversation about reform, and a conversation about making sure our students are highly prepared, not remedial prepared, and then not prepare them in a way that colleges want them to be prepared? So, my question around it is, is not a disagreement necessarily, but it is a, um, what does that look like in terms of knowing that our kids are actually prepared for, for their schoolwork? Because it is a difference for me to say, list the elements of, you know, burglary, the breaking and entering the dwelling house at nighttime with the intent to commit a felony or larceny therein, as opposed to compare and contrast that to common law and statutory law. It's a difference. So, I, I'm struggling with this because I, I don't know, um, I don't know how it's failing our students. I think we're supposed to prepare our students and actually help them. If, if, if you're used to getting a 92, um, then to me, the goal should be that we need to get you on that higher scale of an A, not on the 92 scale of an A, and you're a fabulous student. So, I'm, you know, that's what I struggle with in this conversation. I think it needs to be beyond just numbers. It should be, what are we talking about in terms of, at the end of the day, students are learning?
And, um, that's precisely why we, we did the slide that talked about the formative versus the summative. And it is, um, there are those knowledge and skills that you, and you did a, a beautiful job talking about a level-one question versus a level-four. And that level-four question really is able to measure enduring understanding of the concept, and, and we actually want to have a mechanism that will provide some sort of grade for that. Now, the, the issue really is, as, as I think about this, I think about how are our students able to compete with other students who are coming through systems like this already? And if our students are coming through systems where the numerical value of something is a 88, um, but because of the way we're configuring grades, it's a 90 or 91, then I think, I, I'm not so sure we are preparing our students to move, um, into, um, the next level.
Right.
And, and I want to make sure that, this is not meant to hurt students. This is meant to really make sure that they're prepared to be able to compete competitively in either the global market or in, uh, institution of higher ed. And you just described what your expectations are in institution of higher ed, and, you know, it's, I'm not suggesting that's the right way either, but my daughter talks about her two assessments, a midterm and a final.
Yeah. And that's it?
And, and all the grades are based on that.
Yeah.
And she, and her, her final grade is based on the outcome of those two things. And not that I'm advocating that for students, and I don't think we should, um, in a K-12 situation, however, we have to begin the evolution so that our students are prepared to operate inside of that structure.
And then I would just finally say, I think he's buzzing again. I, you know, I certainly don't agree. I don't care what grading scale you have, you cannot grade students on whether or not they show up and, you know, turning up. I don't care what system we're on, you can't do that. Um, that doesn't prepare them. Mr. Harris?
Um, when we're talking about creating, I guess, career and college-ready students, and how our grading policy looks towards that, I think that, um, of course, colleges are gonna look at our grading policy, but I believe that colleges are gonna look ju, um, just as much as our, as our curriculum, how we are, you know, assessing our students, type of questions we're asking them just as much as our grading policy. And I believe that it's gonna weigh just as much about what a subject content we're learning, um, is gonna weigh just as much as what our grading policy is. Um, so, the reason why I, I don't support this grading policy is because I, I had a conversation with Ms. Brown, um, when I first got on the board, it was, it was actually before I was even sworn in, and we sat down and we talked about it. And I had to change the way I thought myself, because, uh, when I sit in my classes, I work very hard. And I would go out in the hallways, and I would see students hanging, hanging out in the hallways, and I would think that every student who gets an E on their report card, every student who gets a low D on their report card, are the students that are hanging out in the hallways. And Ms. Brown, um, and, and Ms. Jackie Brown had to explain to me that, you know what, there are some students out there whose best is a, is a si, is a 60%. That's their best. They try, they study hard, but they just don't get it. And the way, and, and, and what public school system is now, um, it's not about, you know, mastering a subject content, it's about getting a general understanding of, of a wide range of content. And not everybody is, is, um, not everybody is, some, you know, certain people are math people, certain people are language arts people, certain people are foreign language peoples, uh, uh, foreign language students. And, um, cer, certain students, their, their best is gonna be that, that borderline, is gonna be that, that, um, that's in that 60% range. And what incentive, what hope do they have to improving if they know that if they slip up, and they, and they make, and they mess up, and they get a 50, uh, 50% one quarter, or a 55% two quarters? They know, they, most likely, a student, a student knows their ability. Um, and most students do know their ability, what, what I've seen. They know, I talked to a student last night, and he's, and he was talking about taking, um, and I know this is an advanced course, but he was talking about taking AP Calculus. I, I don't know how I passed AP Calculus. It was the hardest thing I've ever seen in my life. I was, I was too immature for the class, but, and so, I understood what he was talking about. He said, you know what, realistically, I think I'm gonna get a C, a C in that class. He said, it's just too hard, I'm taking other AP classes, um, it's just really, it's really, I'm not mature enough for the subject, and I underst, I understand just, uh, exactly where he is. Um, but that can be equated to other students. In, in a psychology class, a student may just not get psychology, uh, and the best they can do, and the best they can do, their understanding of that psychology can be that, that, uh, that, you know, that, that 60%, but they're gonna fail that class even though they understand as much as they possibly can. And that's, and that's what's, what this grading policy is gonna do, and I just wanna, uh, clear that up. Um, and I believe that, um, even if our grading policy, and I'm in, on this note, even if our grading policy does, you know, give a couple of extra points, um, like, uh, like Dr. Hyde just said, you know, in others, in other systems, it may be that 88, um, may be their standard, and in ours, it's a 90. If the colleges, they're not gonna just, I don't believe they're gonna just look at our grading policy. If they really look at our curriculum and see how rigorous our curriculum is, they're gonna say, okay, yeah, you get a couple extra points here, just like, um, uh, Charles County gives a couple extra points for honors classes, we don't do that. So, I, I think that when, they're gonna say, okay, well, we give a couple extra points when it comes to our grading policy, but in Charles County, they give a couple extra points for their honors classes, let's look at the curriculum. Our curriculum is just as rigorous as theirs, so really, our student, um, our students aren't that much different. So, I, I believe that we can fix this in our curriculum, uh, without, uh, with, with still having the incentives for students improving, with still having the incentive, uh, for a student not being punished for making a mistake, because a lot of times, our students make mistakes, and I made mistakes plenty of times in my, um, in my academic career so far, and I know I will continue to make mistakes even when I go off to college, and I don't want them to be punished, because, uh, like I said, when students, um, when students don't, uh, when students see that it's too hard, they give up. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, Ms. Waller?
I'm enjoying, uh, the discussion. Um, in today's society, doing your best is not enough. And certainly, we have to start with our youngest students, and as they matriculate through high school, uh, as we look at our colleges, even now, we have a lot of college professors, they are gumming down their education because our students are not ready for where they're ready to teach and where they've been taught. And we're concerned about retention, and I've seen college professors leave certain schools because they weren't able to teach what they knew was best and what they wanted to do for the students in college. So, I, I think that, again, this is part of the culture change. I don't think it's setting our students up for failure. I think that it's, it's, it's gonna have to do with changing a mindset. Uh, and it's important, again, that, you know, I don't believe that colleges know in, uh, if a college out west knows what we're doing specifically with our curriculum. Uh, and we do want our students, you know, I think it's great if all students got an A, and that does not necessarily that you're a, a great, great student. I mean, if you get a C, you could be a good student also. Uh, and I see the students frowning at me, but, um, I, I, I feel very strongly that just doing your best is not enough, and I believe that our students can achieve. When you go on a job in today's society, doing your best is just not enough, and, and we have a responsibility to train you and prepare you for the, your career and for college.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Fletcher?
We've constantly said since we've, uh, been on this board that we want to have our kids, number one, career-ready and college-ready. Um, we're getting there to, to, to have them college-ready. Um, I've always said that high school should simulate college, because, and, and that mid-college will help that. Um, although, you know, Jonathan, you just amazed me, and I'm really proud of you for doing your argument, but, um, universities may not, uh, look at part of the curriculum. They're also saying that our kids are coming into college, and we call it grade 13. And I think we do more of an injustice to our students if we're, I'm not gonna say if we're not grading properly based upon knowledge. And that's what we want to do. Our job here as board members is to make sure that you get that knowledge so that wherever you go, be it work, or be it at college, that you're right on point. If we're not giving you the correct grades and giving you a sense of false hope, then we're basically giving you, it's an injustice to you, and then I have not done my job. So, I am saying that the mindset that we have to, to change, not only the, the students, because I want you to get, get an A, but I want that to be a true A that you have, that you earned it, so that that A can take you anywhere where you can compete on the global market.
Um, so I'm, so I'm, oh, oh!
I just wanted to weigh in.
Yes, please do.
I had three points. Um, the first one is, is, uh, as a former educator and administrator, I'm a firm believer that if we set our expectations high for our students, they will meet them. They will do everything they can to meet them, and we're gonna work with you through this process. Um, it is a change in mindset. The second one is, is that from a principal's perspective, we had situations last year where students could make an A first quarter and do nothing else for the rest of the year and pass a course. And that's not what we want our students to leave school with. They knew automatically what they needed, and they, they met that. And then after that, it was, I don't need to do anything else to pass the class. I have senioritis, and I'm done. I know I have passed it, and I don't need this course for graduation, which is not what we want our students to walk away with. And then the mathematics teacher in me just wanted to make sure that you knew that if in the first quarter you achieved an 85, all you needed for quarters two, three, and four is a 91. And you said that that's typically what you give, you give a 91 or 92, you still would earn an A as your final grade.
So, I'm gonna defer to, um, give him the last word on this issue. Mr. Harris?
All right, so, um, let me, let me just see how, how I can best, uh, explain myself. Um, I believe that- that if we really are trying to make career and college-ready students, it needs to start with the curriculum. If our curriculum is rigorous, if our curriculum is rigorous, it's going to, and a student produces an A in that curriculum, I mean, a student gets an A in that, in that class, it's going to show that that student has excelled at high levels or that student understands the curriculum. So, let's, let's go back to this, I'm going to use the numeral system, I mean, not the numeral, the alphabetical system. Two As and two Bs last year was an A. And before I, before I do that, I totally understand that the point seventy-five, and of course, I didn't agree with that either. To me, it was just unacceptable. But two As and two Bs. And if we have a rigorous curriculum, very rigorous curriculum, and that student got two As and two Bs in a rigorous curriculum, I believe that that student should be rewarded for excelling in that rigorous curriculum and receiving an A. That's what I believe. A rigorous curriculum, in a rigorous curriculum. Now, if we're not in a rigorous curriculum, and, and it's not, like I say, if it's, and it's not rigorous, maybe it should be a B. But if we're in a rigorous curriculum, I believe that two As and two Bs should be an A. It says, it says the student has done everything they, everything they could possibly do, well, maybe not everything they could possibly do because they did receive two Bs, but they have done almost as much as they could possibly do, let them be rewarded. They have been in a rigorous curriculum. They have showed mastery of the subject. If, if that's not the case, then tell me one reason why a student should come to school and try to learn. If, if they're not going to be rewarded for doing the best they can, if they're not rewarded for mastering the subject, why come to school? And, and that's, that's the point I'm trying to make is, at the end, when students look at this grading, when students see their grades this, next, this year, at the end of this year, and like I said, they're going to show improvement, they're going to say, and they see that, you know, E, D, C, EDC and, yeah, EDC and a B will most likely result in a D, why did I even try?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. I did say I wasn't giving him the last word, did I? Okay. Dr. Hyatt, you have the floor to move us to the next agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Harris. The, the next set of items are items under budget consent. And this is a lengthy list today, item seven point one through seven point one nine.
Move approval? Is there a second? Superintendent, the second, that the Board of Education accept and approve agenda items for the budget consent agenda. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next items, items under eight point zero consent agenda, these are regular consent agenda items. We have two proclamations, one commemorating American Education Week in Prince George's County Public Schools, the other proclamation commemorating National Native American History Month in Prince George's County Public Schools. And then we have item eight point three, Board Action Summary Release Performance Bond for Maximus Corporation.
Thank you, Dr. Hyatt. Colleagues, is there a motion? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Waller and Ms. Illev. Superintendent recommends consent agenda items eight point one through eight point three for approval. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed. Dr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There, that moves us to governance unfinished business. There is no unfinished business today, and we also do not have new business or first reader items. So, then that moves us to eleven point O, public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Dr. Hyatt. Colleagues, we have twelve registered speakers for public comment on non-agenda items. First on the list is Erica Farrell, PTSA President, John Hanson Montessori, Status of CIP. Okay. I'm sorry, I was reading a different line. John Hanson, French Emergent, Status of CIP for John Hanson, French Emergent. Erica Farrell. Okay. Nicole Nelson?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Nelson. I'm the PTSA President of John Hanson Montessori School. I am here tonight to voice my concerns about the John Hanson facility. The building, which was constructed in nineteen fifty-six, is listed in the Fiscal Year 2011-2016 Capital Improvement Plan as a state and county-funded project. According to the CIP, the building is in need of eleven million dollars in renovations to quote, "modernize the original building and bring it up to code educationally and environmentally," end quote. Of the more than twenty construction projects listed in this CIP, John Hanson has the dubious distinction of needing the renovations to be brought up to code. There is no timeline nor funding set aside for the renovation. It simply says, "to be determined." John Hanson is listed at number sixteen in the CIP. A facility that needs to be brought up to code didn't even make the top five or the top ten. How long will the students at John Hanson continue to be neglected? There are dedicated teachers, administrators, and parents who have invested in this building, and we want a healthy and safe educational environment for our children. Please help me to understand how a school district in which its model is children come first, allow students to attend a facility ten months out of the year, five days a week, and six hours a day that is not up to code. We look forward to meeting with the CIP Director at our next PTSA meeting on November ninth at seven PM. I also invite school board members to join us that night so you can hear firsthand how the school system plans to remedy the situation. Tonight, parents are here to tell you what it is like for their children to attend a building that is not up to code. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Stephanie Williams?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Williams, and I'm speaking on behalf of the children who attend John Hanson, the, a school at the John Hanson facility. Just as Ms. Nelson stated, according to the Capital Improvement Plan, our school is, has been recognized as a facility in need of major repairs. And plumbing is listed as one of the major problem areas. So, I would like to take the opportunity now to show you some water samples that were taken from various locations of our school. And I'm not sure the best way to distribute this to the members. Am I allowed to tease? So, the best way to look at this, if you take a white piece of paper against the jar. So, the samples that you will see are taken, were taken from bathrooms, classrooms, and other sources of drinking water. And if you have a chance to examine them, you can notice that there's, the water is brown. I took the liberty to research the causes of brown water, and my research showed that it can be caused by the presence of dirt, sediment, bacteria, or rust. It's my guess that our water, source drinking water, is contaminated with rust due to the age of our pipes. However, you know, that's not validated because we didn't have a chance to test it. So, I would ask for you to please test our water samples. Further research shows that drinking water contaminated with rust could lead to health problems as too much, if too much iron is absorbed into your body, it could cause liver damage, liver damage. So, I plead before you today to please take our request seriously and send someone to our school to investigate our, our system, our water system, and take steps to remedy this problem. Our children should feel safe and an educational environment, and we, as the parents, should feel comfortable sending them to school. I should not have to tell my children not to drink water when they go to school out of fear that it may make them sick. So, again, I please beg you to investigate the situation and make our school a priority when you put the CIP plans in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Akila Jefferson? Chandra Robinson?
Good evening. I'm Chandra Robinson, a parent also at John Hanson. And in addition to the concerns you've already heard, I had the unfortunate privilege of obtaining a copy from the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene in terms of the recent routine inspection of our kitchen. And we have a serious rodent problem. Clearly, the four items here, speaking from the report, we were asked to clear all mice droppings from the floor under the shelving area, eliminate all mice from the kitchen area, proper traps need to be set and set in key areas. Now, while this is the kitchen area, it has already expanded out into the classrooms. I have a three-year-old and a kindergarten student there as well, he's first grade. And being in a monastery environment, they are in the floor primarily doing their work. It is not uncommon for him to come home while we're counting and using our manipulators, rodents are running across the floor. They're finding mice in traps and droppings. It's not uncommon for them to find this in their work areas. It's not uncommon for them to, while eating lunch, walking them, go across the stage, across the table. Also, if my children have asthma and allergies, this is an extreme concern. My son came in fully regulated by all his asthma and allergy medicines. Now, nothing works. None of his medicines are working. We now have to upgrade everything in terms of, he has to take shots. Nothing's over the counter. None of the prescriptions work. There has been an increase in cost. And I have two children there. On top of that, there's mold growing in the classroom, black mold, which just exacerbates, if you know anything about asthma, it makes it even worse. So, this is not just, while it was a kitchen area, it has gotten, we have an infestation problem. It's beyond just the kitchen. And I'm listening to all you all as you talk about college readiness and great, excited about what I hear. But for me, college readiness began with my three-year-old at pre-K. And if she can't get the basics of counting because she's watching the rodents and mice and the traps and distracted about all that, I promise you, by the time she get to the tenth grade level, ninth grade, where it seems like the focus seems to be right now, she's, she can't get the basics. She's distracted. I hear, I don't hear counting stories. I hear, mommy, we saw a mouse today. We saw another one today, three to four in a week. And I just, they're not, there aren't any mice in my home. And as a former social worker, conditions like this, these are the things that I used to do to remove children from home, from their homes. So, for my child to have to try to sit in an environment and learn, that's unacceptable for me. So, that was something that I felt passionate about as a professional. I equally feel likewise as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Harriet Richmond?
Greetings, Dr. Hyatt, members of the Board of Education. As indicated, my name is Harriet Richmond. I am also a parent and a PTSA Executive Board Member for John Hanson Montessori School. As my colleagues have indicated, I'm here on the same concern. And I almost had a heart attack when I heard you say, Dr. Hyatt, you were considering taking some funding out the CIP for funding some of these other programs, when we have these significant problems at our school and desperately need our eleven million dollar renovation. And I'm going to, my colleagues have already talked about the pipes, they've already talked about the rodent infestants, and I'm going to talk about the security piece. Because just this Monday, I came in to pick up my children, and my son is outside with me, and we find, we see a helicopter hovering over our building. And he takes a look at it, and he says, Mom, that's a police helicopter. I said, oh, come on, come on, come on, let's go on inside. And come to find out, we have at least for the two thousand and ten school year, our fourth wanted fugitive running through our school building. And we made sure the children in the playground came in also. And here's some repairs that we've been asking to be made at our school that is still incomplete. We wanted to repair and replace the door closures throughout our building. We want to put a panic bar, which is missing on our second door. We need locking door knobs to several rooms that houses fuses and feeders to prevent unauthorized entry. We need four replacement master locks used to secure chains on entering doors. And then we need some other little things like the rodent issue. We need indoor sweeps on kitchen storage room door to prevent mice from entering. We need an indoor sweeps on classrooms to prevent snakes from entering. We need the sinks in the upstairs teacher's lounge in the media center fixed because they run continuously. We need repair, leaking windows. I mean, the list goes on and on here. And we've submitted the work request, and yet we are not getting any response. So, we've been at John Hanson Montessori School located Oxon Hill Road for eight years. Very proud when we moved into it. We, parents rallied around, painted it. We've solicited support from the community, from business leaders who provided our beautiful curtains in our auditorium, the mat in the front, our marquee. We're doing what we need to do. We get support from Home Depot, Denison's. We're out there trying to improve my building, but we're at a point now where we really need help from the school system. And although we were told that this wasn't going to be our permanent location, it's time to call it home. So, please help us make it a real home for our community of eager learners and future leaders, providing the funding and implementing the renovations today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richmond. Okay, our next registered speaker is Jacqueline Spate.
Madam Chair, before we move to the, to the next speaker, I want to comment on the John Hanson because I was actually at John Hanson a couple of days ago and had a chance to walk through both the Montessori and the emergent side of the school and talk with both principals and met a lot of staff. I did, I was aware of the pipes, and so I wanted to take a look at that, particularly with the issue around the mole. But I also want the parents to understand that we do have the work orders, and we are sending teams out to both look at and have a plan for completing that work, particularly the work that is just normal maintenance. The other part, though, is we will send some individuals out also to look at or into the rodent problem. I was not aware of that, and neither principal actually talked about that. They did talk about some other issues, but no one said anything about a rodent problem. That's the first I'm hearing of that this evening. So, I will get back out to, or have staff go out and look at where we can put door sweeps or anything in the event that those rodents are coming from outside.
Thank you, Dr. Hyatt. If you could make sure the board gets your regular update on that, as you have done in the past. I'm sorry, Ms. Spate, you're up, ma'am.
Good evening, Superintendent Hyatt and board members. The title of my statement is Kingsford Elementary Kindergarten Student Left to Find His Own Way Home. Thank you for allowing me and my husband to address you today with a very serious issue that has impacted my family and I am sure other families of students within PG County School System. When you hear, "things happen," you're second on my priority list. He fell between the cracks. Sometimes we lose them. And in the history of PG County Public Schools' transportation, we've only lost one child. What emotions do these statements evoke within you? I ask because these are the exact statements my husband and I were met with when we encountered PG County School Administration and officials when it came to the safety and security of our five-year-old son, not once, but twice. I am a parent, we are parents, of two children that attend Kingsford Elementary School in Mitchellville, Maryland. Our sons are in the third grade and in kindergarten. Let me first begin by saying, my husband and I are our children's first advocates. When we enrolled our children in PG County Public Schools, we would never have believed that not once, but twice, would our family be subjected to the unimaginable fear, frustration, and anger. Our five-year-old child was abandoned twice on the streets of Prince George's County and left to fend for himself. If not for alert, caring, and concerned citizens, he could have been lost forever. If not for alert, caring, and concerned citizens, he could have been lost forever. We were promised that the, that responsible leadership would address this issue and ensure our children's safety. It has become evidently clear that even with specific and precise plans of action in place, this has not occurred. What is also clear is that while apologetic, a persuasive and inherent attitude of callousness and insensitivity is prevalent within the PG County School District, as evidenced by a board member, by a board meeting that was scheduled to start at seven, didn't start till seven twenty-eight, and then three and a half hours later, a concerned parent gets three minutes of your time. As a result, we have lost confidence in the Prince George's County School System in regards to our children's safety, the administration, staff at Kingsford Elementary, and the transportation system to which we have entrusted our children daily. In addition, at no time, either during this incident or the first, did anyone from the school board respond to our numerous phone calls or emails. At this time, I'll let my husband finish our statement. Mr. Spate?
Thank you for your time. Please accept my comments as a continuation of my wife's previous comments. We, the parents of Prince George's County Schoolchildren, have elected you, the board members, to represent us, to be our voice, to answer the call. How many of the children and families will have to be faced with the same unimaginable fear, frustration, and anger that we've had to endure? I would garner to say many, unfortunately. As members of the school board, you should have been as outraged as I and have already laun- launched a formal investigation until the woeful neglect manifested within the Prince George's County School System, its administration, and the Prince George's County Bus Transportation System on the children of Pre- Prince George's County Schools. Not to mention the countless actionable tort liabilities that could result from not abating this issue fully. To ensure everyone is familiar with tort, it means a civil wrong other than a breach of contract for which the court will provide a remedy in the form of an action for damages. It is important to note that negligence, negligence is one type of tort from which liability may arise. Negligence is conduct that falls below the acceptable standard established by law for protecting others against unreasonable risk of harm. Specifically in our case, driver, driver negligence or the failure to exercise proper care under the circumstances. Failure to adopt and enforce safety regulations. Failure to hire competent, responsible drivers. Failure to provide adequate supervision of students while boarding school buses on school grounds. My family and I, we will continue to move forward and will not be congeled into compromise. We will not give Prince George's County Public School System, Kingsford Elementary, or the Prince George's County Bus Transportation System another opportunity to fail our children. The question is, you as the board, how long will you allow this system to fail our children? We thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spate. Our next registered speaker is Kevin Chu. Colleagues, that concludes the list for public comment on non-agenda items. And that brings us to follow-up items. Are, are there any questions or comments regarding follow-up items? Seeing none. Mr. Johnson, if you could, um, provide us a motion for confirming actions in executive session?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move, upon a properly recorded and adopted that the Board of Education of Prince George's County accept items that were discussed and acted upon in closed session, in executive session. Those items were as follows. The appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, dis- discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation and performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, the personnel matter that affected one or more individuals to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on items. The Board to carry out quasi-juridicial functions decided by student appeal matters. Items discussed this afternoon in executive session were personnel matter, appoint, acting appointments, resignation and termination report, student appeals, and legal matters.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Colleagues, is there a second?
Exactly.
It's been properly moved in second that we confirm actions taken in executive session today, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten. Ms. Dent is your name. Sorry, Ms. Dent, could you call the role, please? Would you call the role?
On the motion, Ms. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Fletcher, I'm sorry, Ms. Fletcher. Ms. Iliff?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs? Motion carries.
Thank you. And we are, uh, Mr. Presley, if you will make sure that the board has an opportunity to review the, um, I'll call it show and tell, items for tonight's board meeting. Um, and we are adjourned. Thank you. Roger.[1781.03]